We have a court, so we'll come back to recess. And begin our next public hearing. We've lost all of council now, but I guess you guys know that. So, we're going to...again. Who knows? Next item is a zoning text amendment, ZT 18-04-01 Restaurants Drive-Thru Windows and Highway Corridor. A proposed amendment to the text of the city's zoning ordinance, City Section 34-796, to authorize restaurants with drive-thru windows in the highway corridor, mixed-use zoning district with a special use permit. Charlottesville City Council and the Charlottesville Planning Commission will conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the above proposed zoning text amendment. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Heather Newmeyer, for those of you who are new tonight. So, before you use the proposed zoning text amendment to amend Section 34-796 to allow restaurants with drive-thru windows by special use permit in the city's highway corridor mixed-use district. This highway corridor mixed-use district is one of 14 mixed-use corridor districts where its intent is expressly stated in Section 34-541. It is to facilitate development of a commercial nature that is more auto-oriented than other mixed-use districts in that the development in these areas has been traditionally auto-driven, and the district is intended for the most intense commercial development in Charlottesville. So, City Council initiated the zoning text amendment April 16th of 2018, but the request originally came from Ms. Davies of Williams-Mullen, who was representing Allen Taylor of Riverbend Development. They currently have a site plan in administrative review at, they're calling it Hillsdale Place, but it's actually the Kmart site. Right now, they're just, the site plan is calling to renovate the existing building on-site to house more retail, but in the future development phases, they do intend, or they do wish to have some kind of drive-thru restaurant in that site. To be clear, though, this zoning text amendment would affect the entire zoning district, so it's not just that one project. And then if this ZTA was to be approved, each developer coming forward in the future would have to request a special use permit and then go through the entire public hearing process. So, as part of your review, you are to consider the ZTA based off of the following: whether the proposed amendment conforms to the comprehensive plan, whether the proposed amendment will further the purposes of the city ordinance and general welfare of the entire community, whether there is a need or justification for the change, and then the appropriateness of the property for inclusion within the proposed zoning district related, in this case, it's really just related back to the zoning district's intent. So, the staff report is pretty lengthy. I won't go through every page, given the time, but the comprehensive plan section is the longest. It's pages three through 13, and you'll find within that there's a series of maps that show you, one, the three areas zoned highway corridor district in the city, and then the second map shows that two of those areas called out are actually within the comprehensive plan as small area plans. And then finally, most of you are familiar with this, but the last map shows within one of the small areas called out in the Emmett Street area, we recently just added an amendment to our comprehensive plan, the Hydraulik 29 Small Area Plan, which is a very lengthy, in-depth study of that area that calls for different land uses and also calls for future roads and multi-use connections and just a lot of good data there. So, the reason I bring that up is when you do review special use permits, you always are looking for that compliance with the comprehensive plan, and those types of studies are always fed into that review. So, the remaining factors, the analysis is found on pages 13 and 14, but I'm just going to go through a few of the highlights of my overall recommendation. So, as noted in the Streets That Work Plan, which is technically an amendment of the comprehensive plan, the three areas zoned as highway corridor, which is shown on map one, are roads that carry the highest traffic volumes within the city. One corridor in particular, the 29 North Seminole Trail, carries the highest volumes in the city totaling at 60,000 average annual daily traffic, according to Vida in 2014. The three areas zoned as highway corridor run up against both the northern city limits and the southern city limits, where much of the traffic is using these roads as a means to enter the city from the county and beyond. Given that these areas are not only carrying the most traffic, but the highway corridor zoning district specifically calls for these areas to house more auto-oriented uses than the other mixed-use and neighborhood corridors and limit the most intense commercial development in Charlottesville within this district, staff does find the proposed amendment to be appropriate. Staff recognizes, as mentioned in the other detailed analysis, that two of the three areas zoned for highway corridor are within the city's identified small areas called out, one of which is the Emmett Street North, and then the others, Fifth Street Extended. Within the Emmett Street North of the 250 bypass, the Hydraulik 29 area, small area plan, as mentioned before, has just been adopted in May 2018. This plan provides more detailed guidance that speaks to future roadways, open spaces, and land use recommendations. The majority of the areas zoned highway district are called out in the Hydraulik 29 Small Area Plan for land use that is mixed-use commercial or mixed-use residential. Both Emmett Street North and the 250 bypass call, speak to, and then the Fifth Street Extended, speak to future urban design opportunities, multimodal connections, and more walkable, bikable, and transit-oriented development. Because of all these factors considered, staff would not feel comfortable recommending the use of a drive-thru restaurant by right, as there are many factors to consider other than just the land use. But staff believes by allowing this use through special use permit, there's that higher level of review, which does require compliance with the comprehensive plan, which includes the small area plans and streets that work. And then there's also the discretion for adding conditions that minimize negative impacts. Some examples of conditions are increased buffering, increased screening for parking that is relegated to the back of the building. You can limit business hours to prevent noise issues. You can require wider sidewalks and cafe spaces. And there's other examples to consider, but ultimately, you can help guide a development that is more, a drive-thru window that's more in an urban setting that fits with what the city desires for a commercial use. Just a few examples to throw out that I've actually gone through the review process via special use permit that have actually either been constructed or under construction is the Zaxby's Restaurant. That was in a different zoning district, but it had to get a special use permit, and it met the Streets That Work guidelines, had a wider sidewalk and a curbside buffer. The CVS being built at Barracks in Emmett, this required entrance corridor review, and they have streets that work elements, they're going to have multi-use trails on their site. And then finally, the Hillsdale Place, which was referenced before and is under review, they actually received entrance corridor review approval back in December 2017, but they're showing now 10-foot multi-use trails and five-foot curbside buffers along the perimeter. So, that's just kind of showing you the higher level of review does result in more of the urban design that we want for our commercial uses. So, lastly, the proposed amendment acknowledges that these areas carry the highest volumes of vehicular traffic in the city. These areas are called out to house the most intensive commercial development in order to localize the use in the appropriate areas while still protecting other areas and also having that higher level of review to mitigate the impacts to the neighboring areas. So, staff does recommend that the zoning text amendment is approved by the Plan Commission, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Is there an applicant in this case?
City Council.
City Council, okay.
Why is this happening? Why is this hap...no, no...
Are people not hearing this? There we go.
There you go.
Why is this happening outside of the comprehensive planning process? Where is the fire?
Well, so, you could say that the fire is Hillsdale Place. So, Ashley Davies, like I said before, came representing the developer of Hillsdale Place. They want to, in the future, include a drive-thru on their site, and right now, they're going through the site plan process, but they would not be able to apply for such thing unless this was approved, if that makes sense. But I will say that staff, regardless of that, finds this appropriate because this district is for those types of uses. So, and I think with a special use permit, it adds that higher level of review. So, it's not, we're not saying you can just do it anywhere you want in those areas, so...
What do you think this will do to our primary tourist entrance to the city at Monticello Avenue Route 20, I-64? Think that'll turn that into hamburger alley?
I don't think so necessarily, because if it doesn't meet the requirements, then we would deny the use. But I think in terms of mooses by the creek, if there was a drive-thru restaurant there, I don't think that would be an issue. I think there are pockets where it's appropriate.
Can you envision any applicant coming to you requesting a special use permit for a drive-thru restaurant that you wouldn't support and bring and advocate for?
Absolutely.
Can you describe what that circumstance might be?
If they were to come through any of the areas in that Monticello Avenue area that is predominantly residential, I would not support that, given the proximity.
Would you support it if the residence was behind the resident? I mean, behind the special use permit site?
It depends. I would have to see the application.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there currently any drive-thru businesses in the Monticello Avenue highway corridor?
I don't think so.
Not that I'm aware of.
I can't think of any.
No.
Okay. It's easier to imagine in the other two places, because they already exist.
Correct. Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? What is the zoning for Emmett Street?
Emmett Street, part of it is highway corridor, and then the other part is urban corridor district. And just as a side note, I think for future, it'd be interesting to reconsider if we were to allow a drive-thru restaurant via special use permit in this district, because its intent says it's supposed to be more auto-oriented. We relook at the urban corridor district, given the fact that its intent is to be more pedestrian, and right now, in that district, you are allowed to have drive-throughs via special use permit, and that is where Zaxby's located. So, I think it'd be interesting as a future wishlist-type thing to revisit that, but this is what we're focused on tonight.
So, just so I'm clear, right now, in our zoning ordinance, the urban corridor, which is more pedestrian-friendly, you can have a drive-through, but the most highway commercial auto-centric, you can't.
Yes.
Fantastic. The other thing I have a question about is, as we look through our small area plan, and this is new for you guys, because we look at it for a lot, how does, how do you think this, with that small area plan?
With the Hydraulik 29, smaller area.
Yeah. How does this fit? Because I guess I looked at that as more of an urban design with more of a pedestrian feel as opposed to the auto-centric.
Right. So, and I think that's where that, that higher level element comes in. So, for example, not to call them out, but the Hillsdale Place project, if you look at the Hydraulik 29 plan on that site, there's actually a future roadway connection that is supposed to potentially bisect that Kmart building. So, let's say they wanted to have a drive-through on that parcel, that would be something to consider. How are you, how are you complying to the comprehensive plan, which is under your purview, looking at the special use permit, and that does include the small area plan that is technically now an amendment to the comp plan? So, in terms of that. And then just in general, looking at the small area plan, what are the land uses called out for that specific parcel? Does this make sense to allow for something like that? And I do believe there are cases where you can look throughout the nation, where you can see drive-throughs that do fit in urban setting if they design it correctly. It's just designing it correctly, as opposed to the normal cookie cutter. Here it is.
How often do we get that?
How often do we get what?
Just the normal cookie cutter stuff.
I mean, in a by-right situation?
A lot.
A lot.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, I presume this is an all or nothing, since it modifies the highway zone. So, it's not like we can choose which highway zones we want it to modify.
Right, right. Since there's no applicant, we will open the floor for public comment.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry. So, if it's anyone signed up for public hearing? No one signed up? Okay.
Good evening, Chair.
Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. I'm Ashley Davies, Williams-Mullen, and representing Riverbend Development. I want to thank staff for doing such a thorough analysis of this issue, and City Council for initiating this zoning text amendment. As Heather mentioned, as I was doing the zoning research for the Kmart parcel, I was shocked to find in the highway district that drive-throughs are not allowed. In fact, fast food restaurants are an allowed by-right use, and the zoning ordinance defines those restaurants as having a window where you order food, but there is this separate line for drive-throughs when associated with restaurants that does not allow them in this district. And as Heather mentioned, there are several other districts, such as the High Street Corridor, Cherry Avenue, the Urban Corridor, and Central City, which do allow drive-throughs with a special use permit. I'll also note that any other use other than a restaurant is allowed to have a by-right, allowed to have a drive-through window by right. So, pharmacies, banks. So, it's a very bizarre scenario right now, but we noted it as what we felt like was a pretty obvious omission in the highway corridor district, the one district in the city that is more auto-oriented than other districts. But I also want to point out that I think that there are certainly advances in how drive-throughs for any type of use can be incorporated into a pedestrian-friendly environment. And I think it really gets down to what we're talking about with all of our zoning changes. We really need to be focused on the form of our developments and less focused on the use, more focused on the form and how we really get that right. And I'll also note that in our most historic part of the city, right on Court Square, there is a drive-through. There's a bank with a drive-through right there, and it, you know, it integrates into that urban, walkable environment just fine. I walk my child on that sidewalk every day and have never had an issue. So, I think that through, you know, performance standards and design review, we can address any issues or mitigate any impact. So, thank you for your consideration of our request. It will make a huge difference to this development, and, you know, we're at the point in our Phase Two portion, we want to really transform the site, but we can't sign up tenants if, you know, if somebody wants to come in with a drive-through coffee shop, we can't sign them up because this use is missing right now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this application? Then I will close public hearing and open this for discussion.
I'm not going to be supporting this. I could see why it works in the Fifth Street, which is one of the three areas. I find it incompatible with our recently developed small area plan for hydraulic, which is, has a new vision for that. And I find it very incompatible with the Monticello Avenue Route 20 corridor. In the past, we have had a vision of ourselves as a green city, a healthy living city, even though we've all grown up with them, and I use them myself occasionally when traveling and for convenience. I think it's a, it's a pattern that we need to break. We've been talking about trying to decrease dependence on the single-vehicle occupancy, and I think this is the kind of thing that encourages that. We want people, when they come through our town, to get out of the car and spend more time. It's safer if they get out of the car and go for their cup of coffee and walk, even if they're walking a few steps, it's just, it's just healthier, and it's time to break away from these. I think that drive-through banks and pharmacies probably do have a health and safety component, because people need to make deposits and withdraw cash and may not be able to, don't want to be vulnerable, and people may be ill and need to drive through pharmacies. So, I can see, I can see making that distinction, and it's, I don't know the motivation for excluding drive-through restaurants previously, but I wonder if that wasn't the case. And I've always thought that Charlottesville was very fortunate to have nice entrances near the interstate. We're not as crapped up as most places that we all go when we travel the country. And I think if this happens for this one reason, to accommodate one developer, that we will see it extend on the other corridors and, and the, you know, the cow will be out of the barn, and there will be no way to put it back. I also think if we hadn't had that option, special use option, maybe we would have had a different experience on Emmett Street where the Zaxby's and the Car Wash went in, because we had a vision for that being a more urban-scale development, more pedestrian-oriented, and now we're stuck with what we have there, which is fine, but we're stuck with it probably for another couple of decades, and we didn't move the needle because it was, it was just convenient. So, I'm not going to support this.
Personally, I found the arguments for allowing an SCP more convincing than I expected, but I just cannot see the public purpose in doing this now versus in the comp plan process we're already in.
So, do I hear a motion?
I move to recommend denial of the zoning text amendment to amend and reordain Section 34-796 of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, 1990, as amended to allow restaurants with drive-thru windows by special use permit in the highway corridor on the basis that changes would not serve the interests of public necessity, general public welfare, or good zoning practice.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second for denial. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we were somewhat successful with Zaxby's, and, and I, I agree with the presenter that it doesn't have to look like a Hardee's or any other normal drive-through restaurant, that good design can change the form, and it can be done in a compatible way. And, and I don't feel like I'm in a position to dictate to others how they should live. So, I, I can support this, and I will be voting against a motion.
I'll simply echo that.
Simply echo that?
I'll echo that.
Mr. Hunter, okay. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I don't really think this is about design. I don't think it's Hardee's versus Panera or Starbucks, which people think are a higher level of drive-through. I think if we had not enabled the drive-through, we might have been able to have two, two-or-three-story development on those sites instead of one-story, single-use parcels for development, and that when we're so pushed for space, why should we be enabling and incentivizing that kind of thing? I mean, we see restaurants at Barracks Road and other places in the city near the corner as well that often have drive-throughs, but those don't in Charlottesville because they aren't enabled in those particular locations, and they seem to be very successful. Probably some of our local restaurants that are not franchises or chains and don't have drive-throughs are the most successful ones around. So, to me, it's not just about the form and the design or telling people how to live. I think it really is a land use issue and what we're trying to, what our vision is for the future.
So, I kind of echo that, and I want to, I kind of wrote this thing as I was reading this, and it brought me back to something that several, well, maybe just me and you now, we're in a meeting, but with this, are we getting what we're planning for? We've sat for hours and hours and hours in comprehensive plan meetings. We just adopted a small area plan in our comp plan that is for less auto-centric, that's for more pedestrian, more transit-oriented...
more transit-oriented, uh, uh, a plan for that. And so are we getting what we're planning for? I mean, is this what we're talking about in our comprehensive plan? And so I, I, I won't be able to support this just based off of that. And a couple of years ago, we went through, uh, it was after our, some of our West Main, and we went, we took to a, we had a consultant come in and talk about form-based code and zoning, and they, he looked at us and said, "Are you getting what you're planning for?" And we said, "No." Then he said, "Why do you keep voting yes?" If it's not what you're planning for, and it's not what you're looking at your comprehensive plan for, then why do you keep overriding everything you've planned? And for me, that's what struck, for me, when I, when I read this, is this is not anything we, we've been planning for. This is not in our small area plan, and that's why I can't support it.
I have one question. My question is to Mr. LaHondro. I'm just curious, what would be an example of a good design versus a Hardee's? That, not saying the Hardee's is bad, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of, because I feel like that is your field of expertise. What, in your opinion, is something that would be considered a good design drive-through versus something that's considered not such a good design of a drive-through restaurant?
I'll say acceptable design, and I think the example of the, um, the bank, um, there next to, um, uh, across the street from the park. Well, it's...
The B B and T in Court Square?
Justice Park.
Just, yeah, I can't, I can't remember. Keep up with the names.
Okay.
Yeah. But i- it's compatible, it fits in, and, um, so i- it can happen. It can be designed to be part of the neighborhood fabric.
I mean, there, there are many attractive fast-food restaurants with, on entrance corridors all, that are enabled all over Virginia, and they're very attractive. I just think when we have ten and a half square miles in our city, we can't waste land like that. And it's not compatible with our vision of a healthy city.
That's actually my, my primary concern, is the sort of highest and best use of the inventory that we have, as well as, um, any potential traffic implications. I could, in, in figure, I could probably be solely either way, but I think I'd have a hard time approving it.
And I think it makes sense on Fifth Street, and I don't think it makes sense in the area of our hydraulic small area plan. I don't think it makes sense on Monticello Avenue. So if it doesn't work on two out of three, I can't support it.
Yeah, and I was just relying upon the fact that it's an S U P, so it still get, means that it's coming to it. I wouldn't vote for it if it was a by right, um, but I can support it as an S U P.
You ready to call roll? One more discussion. Ms. Creasy, will you call a question?
This is for denial.
Denial. The motion is for denial.
Right.
Uh, Mr. LaHondro?
No.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Ms. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Sola Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Ooh!
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
I didn't hear Mr. Smith.
He said no. Or no, Mr. Smith said yes.
Yes, yes to the no.
So the motion for denial passes. Okay, thank you. Counsel. Yeah, they're welcome. But that's okay. Because they'll have kids and you want to drive through.
Good call.
Okay, last on the campus, public hearings. But no worries, we're not going anywhere.
So last on our list, the zoning text amendment eighteen dash zero-five-zero-two, mixed-use development standards. A proposed amendment to the text of the city's zoning ordinance, Article Six, Mixed-Use Districts, Division One, General, to specify that in the event that any mixed-use zoning district allows additional height for a mixed-use building, or allows additional residential density for a mixed-use development, the following requirements must be met by the development or, by the building or the development in order to be eligible for the bonus height or development. Bullet point one, if a zoning district allows additional height for a mixed-used building, then residential and non-residential uses shall each occupy at least twelve-point-five percent of the gross-floor area of the proposed building unless different percentages are specified within the zoning, within the regulations for that zoning district. Bullet point two, if a zoning district allows for additional residential density for a mixed-use building, then residential and non-residential uses shall each occupy at least twelve-point-five percent of the gross-floor area within the proposed building unless different percentages are specified within the regulations for that zoning district. Bullet point three, if a zoning district allows for additional residency, residential density for a mixed-use development or project, then the residential and non-residential uses shall each occupy at least twelve-point-five percent of the total gross, gross-floor area of the buildings within the proposed development or project unless different percentages are specified within the regulations for that zoning district. Once again, it says Charlottesville City Council and the Charlottesville Planning Commission will jointly conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the above-proposed zoning text amendment. But we're not doing that, so we're going to do something else.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Robertson from the City Attorney's Office. I have written your staff memo that is in your agenda materials. Um, as noted, back in November of two thousand sixteen, um, I and our office, um, provided a legal audit, and among the things that we pointed out is that your zoning ordinance has a couple of fairly substantial holes in it, um, that in certain places, uh, offer bonus height, uh, for a building, or bonus residential density for a building or development, without any guidance of what you have to do to qualify for that bonus. The reference to, uh, so for example, um, in one zoning district, you're allowed to have an extra four stories of building height if you build a mixed-use building. Mixed use is very generally defined as being a combination of residential and non-residential uses, but there's absolutely no guidelines as to how substantial either one of those uses has to be, um, or what you're looking for when you were offering the additional height in return for getting a mixed-use building. So, um, this has been out there for a number of years. Your current zoning ordinance dates from two thousand and three, but, um, for a long time, there just wasn't a lot of development happening in the city, and so it sat and it sat, and, um, there've been a couple of developments in which people have not been pleased with the results that have, have happened because of these holes, but you're just now starting to see, uh, a lot more major developments come through, and, um, quite a few in the zoning districts in which these holes currently exist. Throughout two thousand seventeen, we talked at a number of worksheet shops, um, not those of you who are new, but the, then, the Planning Commission at the time, about all the different, uh, recommendations. At the end of that process, the commission adopted a resolution that, um, authorized us to proceed, um, when we could, with a series of several categories of, of updates that were considered pretty urgent for the zoning ordinance. This was one of those things, and, um, uh, after the adoption of that ordinance, um, Place organized a working group of local designers and, um, professionals who requested an opportunity to brainstorm a different way to achieve the goals of the bonus provisions. There's some belief, um, and I think there's validity to this belief, that trying to prescribe in your ordinance percentages for specific things is too restrictive, that people, that there should be a different approach to figuring out how you get the type of mixed-use development you want in certain urban areas. But, um, we've had this ordinance since two thousand three. It was amended once in two thousand eight to take some things out, but we didn't plug the holes that were created when some of those things were taken out, and now, uh, we're at two thousand eighteen, and we still haven't figured out a different way to deal with this. So Place studied it, um, their working group, um, wasn't actually able to come to consensus on how to do it better. Um, they need more time to look at it, they need more time to consider it, um, after you finish up the process of sort of re, re-envisioning what your, um, comprehensive plan land use map looks like. And in the meantime, Place then contacted me in, back in March, and asked me if I would please consider asking the commission to initiate a change that would plug these holes unless and until a better solution has come forward. So that's how you got the ordinance that you have, and basically, um, the, what the ordinance says is that if there's no other, um, specific definition of what mixed use means in relation to a bonus provision, uh, then, um, mixed use will mean that the residential and non-residential components of the mixed-use building, or the mixed-use development or project, whatever the words are in the particular location, the minimum required presence that has to have, um, is twelve and a half percent of the gross-floor area. So, um, you can have more than that, but you can't have less than that for either the residential or the non-residential component, and it's as simple as that. There's just a handful of places where this is important. Um, in a lot of other places, you still have specific combinations referenced, so typically, the percentages that are referenced other places are seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent, and whether that's residential or commercial depends on what district you're in. Uh, but this, this uses twelve percent, which is the lowest percentage we found anywhere in the ordinance, and that percentage is used one other place, and that's in the Cherry Avenue District. And so, um, that was my original recommendation. It's now Place's recommendation, and we hope that, uh, you will consider, uh, recommending this, uh, text amendment to City Council.
Any questions?
I'd like you to ask you to predict the future. What is the housing impact of, of making this change?
I, I think that, so based on our only experience in recent years, the, the, the building that we all are sort of thinking of came forward as a building that was primarily, um, non-residential. Um, it, I think it was mostly office space with, um, I believe it's just one apartment. And so, um, at least based on that one example, what you would have gotten in that location is a, a larger presence of residential. It, it may still not have been the amount that you wanted in that location, but it would have been more than one.
Question?
Seems pretty clear-cut to me.
So, no questions, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone signed up, no one's signed up, so please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Travis Pietala from the Southern Environmental Law Center. Thank you for the chance to comment, and welcome to the new members of the commission. Um, I hope you all received the email we sent yesterday, and I'll mainly be recapping those comments here tonight. As staff has explained, the purpose of this ETA is to close a significant loophole in the existing zoning ordinance. The city code currently offers height and density bonuses for mixed-use proposals in certain districts, without defining any real threshold that must be met to qualify. The district that's most affected by this today is Downtown Extended, which makes up the vast majority of the strategic investment area. The city currently allows a doubling in building height from fifty feet to a hundred and one feet by right for any mixed-use building in this district. That's the tallest by right height allowance anywhere in the city. Yet with no mixed-use standard in place, incorporating even a single-studio apartment into a large office building would make a project eligible for this bonus. That's clearly not what the city has in mind when it incentivizes mixed use in any district, but it's a particular concern in the Downtown Extended District because of the new zoning code being considered for the S I A. As part of that process, the city's consultant has recommended using height and density bonuses as the primary method to achieve affordable housing and other public benefits in this area. In other words, by right height may be set at fifty feet, but it could be increased to seventy-five feet if the building includes a certain number of affordable units. But if a developer today can build up to a hundred and one feet by right for including a single apartment in an office building, the city is losing valuable opportunities to leverage height with the new zoning code. To address this problem, we believe the, the default twelve-point-five percent mixed-use threshold being proposed for those districts that don't currently have a standard is a reasonable solution, if only in the short term. This percentage is based on standards already used in other districts, and it's well below the twenty-five percent threshold that applies in some others. To be sure, we don't see this as a permanent solution, and it's far from perfect. We agree with others that the city would benefit from a broader citywide review of how to best encourage and incentivize good mixed-use development across our community, but that's likely to be a lengthy conversation and process, and the city can't afford to leave the current loophole open in the meantime. Either the undefined bonuses in the current code should be eliminated, or made available only by special use permit, or a reasonable stop-gap measure like the one before you should be put in place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Then I'll close the public hearing, and we can have discussion. Or a motion.
Madam Chair, recognizing that we have a flaw in the current, uh, ordinance, and this is not a perfect, um, recommendation or solution, but it's a stop-gap measure, I make the following motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed zoning text amendment ZT eighteen dash oh-five oh-two, because the amendments are required by public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice.
I'd like to second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, will you call roll?
Uh, Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Ms. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Sola Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
Motion passes finally unanimously tonight.
You know, could, could I just say that I, I appreciate the number of comments that we received from very knowledgeable, uh, people in the development community, and that we weren't dis, dismissing their comments, but that had, we had spent two years trying to find something that would be more workable, and without doing the comprehensive rezoning that we hope will follow the comp plan, we, we did this as a stop-gap measure, and hopefully some notes like that will go to council as, as well. It's not perfect, but it's...
Right.
Right. Okay, so, we have gotten through our public hearings, and, uh, we are on to the Entrance Corridor Review Board items. I think we probably need a break from site plans and things, and let's go ahead and do those East Entrance Corridor Review Board items. Are y'all in agreement with that? Stick to the agenda as it is?
Yeah.
So I will gavel. Sorry, guys. Caffeine. So I will gavel us out of the Planning Commission and into the Entrance Corridor Review Board. And the first on the agenda is nine sixteen, nine-twenty, East High Street, and three-twenty-five, Tenth Street, Northeast, uh, or Tenth and High.
Sure, I had to, eleven o'clock. Let me hand something. I don't know if this one, I don't have to hand anything out. Good evening. Um, this is for the Tenth and East High Street Medical Office Building. This is a project site that's just over an acre. Um, currently on the site are two one-story buildings, both, uh, will be demolished for the Currently on the site are two one-story buildings, both, uh, will be demolished for the project. Uh, this project came to you in May, uh, and with a four oh vote to deny approval of this certificate of appropriateness, and subsequently, the applicant met with two of the ERB members, and the result was, uh, positive design revisions, uh, which you will review tonight. The applicant is requesting a certificate of appropriateness to construct a two and a three-story medical office building, and a two-story rear parking deck with a hundred and seventy-six spaces. It's an irregularly shaped building, uh, mainly three stories, with a two-story segment on High Street and a two-story surround on the rear facade. Key changes from the prior design include addition of cable-supported awnings, uh, with standing-seat metal roof over the first-floor windows and entries. The High Street entry is, is now framed by a landscaped patio area that's surrounded by a low brick wall with a precast cap metal railing. At the parking structure, uh, rear, the facade is broken up with brick pilasters, each with a wall-mounted light. Between the pilasters are framed, unglazed openings, uh, into the lower parking area. A stone surround has been added to the lower parking entry. At the upper level of the parking deck, uh, metal railings span between the pilasters, and at the southeast corner, a concrete stair with metal railing allows access from the Tenth Street sidewalk. Um, at the top of the stairs are a series of bollard lights, and planters have been added to the upper parking deck. In evaluating the EC guidelines, we offer the following for your consideration: height, mass, and scale are appropriate; the building is well-articulated; the modifications to the parking structure, including the stairs, soldier cores and precast accent bands, pilasters and railings, stone surround at the parking entry, are positive improvements; the mix of building materials is appropriate; however, material specifications are still needed; the design and arrangement of the building on the site is appropriate; the addition of a patio area at the East High entrance enhances the streetscape; the addition of stairs and wall lighting, the use of railing opens up the brick facade of the parking structure; the use of smaller trees along portions of both streets is appropriate, given the limited space along East High, and the presence of overhead lines along Tenth Street. The goals are to make this site function well for users of the site and the Entrance Corridor, and to have an attractive development that is compatible with its surrounding context. The new building will allow the continued and updated use of this site as a medical facility that has long served the community. With the revisions, the proposed building scale and materials, we believe they are appropriate and compatible with the Entrance Corridor. Uh, staff recommends approval of this COA, and I noticed that in the staff report, I, I didn't include that, and I apologize for the omission, but if the ERB opts to approve the COA, staff recommends consideration of the following: the ERB should review and approve material samples; all glass should be specified as clear, and we have historically identified clear as no less than seventy percent physical, visible light transmittance; and while signage requires separate permits and approvals, uh, require that the signage appear at night to be lit white, and require that rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened within the appurtenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so there are members that met. For transparency, would you report out on your meeting?
Uh, I was one of them. Um, and, uh, uh, what, what would you like, besides my just reporting?
Just, I mean, you know...
Stepping forward.
Okay.
No, I was, I was quite, uh, uh, I don't know, I feel like I should wait till the regular discussion to, to share comments, but, um, we had a very constructive conversation. Uh, the architects had listened to, uh, our, uh, comments, uh, in the initial review, and, uh, I felt like they listened, uh, and responded well to them, and responded in a, a very constructive, um, and, and, uh, positive manner.
Thank you. You met?
If I may, I was, I was also present.
Fantastic.
I was impressed at how, how many changes they were able to make, how quickly, uh, and how specific to, um, the issues that were laid out at the previous meeting.
Great. And I'd just like to do that, because, well, we have a public meeting, and if you meet separately, I think it's for the public interest to, to know that. So there?
Yeah.
I did not meet, anybody else meet?
Well, it seems to have brought, um, a much improved design to us, and I really appreciate them doing that.
Yes.
I, I, I don't know that we can take much, all that much credit for it, 'cause, 'cause the architects and, and the developer, uh, voluntarily brought forward lots of changes and made the, the, uh, significant, uh, progress on the, on the, and listened to us.
Okay.
Well, I find it much improved. My, and my only concern, and this is gonna sound a little bit weird, but, and you know, I'm, I'm gonna address this to Jody, because you know more about it than I do, being an architect and working with a variety of buildings at UVA. Is it safe in today's environment to have such a open vehicular path towards the building? Or would it be better to have some kind of, uh, almost loop drop-off in that, in that area, so that you wouldn't advance toward, directly towards a building in a vehicle?
So before we get into discussion, real quick, I have been remiss to let the applicant come up and give us their dog-a-pony.
Oh, yeah.
So please, come up and...
I thought it was a...
Please give us your name in ten minutes, and tell us all the wonderful changes that you came up with, all by yourself, without Jody.
Should we flee? So, we're gonna try to put that on for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My name's Mark Dignard with Innovate Architecture and Interiors, and we're gonna try to find an HDMI cord. Is there a technical person?
Yeah. Oh. Perfect.
As opposed to drop-off, mom, and...
David, are you with us?
Mm-hmm.
He's, Grand Oz, he's behind the curtain.
So while we're getting that up, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, the staff report, I thought, was, shared a lot of the comments that we had, that, that this site has been healthcare use for seventy years, and the practices that, uh, want to occupy this building and continue their practices in the city are all over forty years old. So, they just wanna find a way to continue to serve the community in a, in a convenient way. We appreciated all the comments that we got last time, and we went back and took them to heart, and tried to really understand what exactly you were telling us, and, and how we could incorporate those into the building to try to get at, because it's hard when you hear the comments, to try to figure out, what do they really mean? What are they trying to say? And what I thought mostly was that the building seemed like, you wanted a building that invited people in, as opposed to sort of push people out. Um, and what about our building? So what we're showing you right now, and for those of you who didn't see this last time, this is the building we presented last time. Um, a couple of the major concerns were, the High Street elevation looked a little austere. Uh, it didn't really invite people in, um, and it looked a little too institutional, I think was your comment, Ms. Keller. The other, uh, m- major issue had to do with this long wall that you would walk along, if you were just a pedestrian walking along the building, um, down Tenth, and it was sort of, again, very stark. Uh, the landscaping was there, but it just had the openings. We talked a lot about the height of this wall, and we talked a lot about the, the mass of this wall, and how it affected you as a pedestrian. We also talked a little bit about safety, um, and we talked a lot about, how tall is it at the very end? And so, and, and the last sort of major comments really had to do with, um, the top of the parking deck, although you really can't see it too much, the question is, if I do see something there, what kind of activity is there? In this model, it was just a white blank box, so is there any vegetation or landscaping that can happen there? So just for a point of reference, so we can all see where we were before, I thought it would help, be helpful, and now we'll show you, uh, what the changes are. So, the first thing we talked about with the development team is, what can we do to invite the community to be more part of the building, have the building provide amenities to, to the community, even just outside of the healthcare function? And they immediately stepped forward and said, well, let's try to do something that would add a bit of retail coffee shop, uh, invite the, the pedestrians to have a new amenity to the community. And so, um, we thought that was great, that they were willing to step up and do that, because a lot of times you do a medical office building, they want every square foot for medical office. So we appreciated that opportunity, so that gave us design flexibility, uh, to incorporate your comments. As you can see, um, the addition of these canopies, I think, add a more pedestrian scale to the building, add more shadow, opportunities for signage, the idea of creating this sort of patio where there can be seating outside of the shop, so there's interior now exterior, um, sort of opportunities for use. Um, and, and we feel like that really changed the look of it, changed the scale of some of the landscaping, um, and felt like it fit. It fit more. I think Ms. Keller's comments were, were well-taken, um, related to that. As we go down the street, the, the big parking garage wall was, was the next obstacle that we wanted to take on, and what we decided to do was, we created a sort of portal at the parking entrance. So that immediately broke it up. You see that sort of stone portal around the parking entrance? Not only does it help define the parking entrance for vehiculars, as well as pedestrian traffic, um, as more of an intuitive wayfinding device, it also sort of breaks up that long linear brick strip that runs along. For the parking garage itself, we took what was mostly wall and tried to make it more fifty-fifty or less wall, and more opening. So, the wall became a series of pilasters. The pilasters became a, a great place to put, uh, lighting at each one, because Ms. Green had some comments about the lighting and, and safety, and so we thought that really helped that. At the top of the pilasters, we actually made them planters, so we can actually have some green space or vegetation associated with the top of that parking deck on that edge. And then we incorporated a decorative rail between the pilasters. That's, uh, very typical of lots of buildings that are in and around the city and in the mall. And then the edge of the parking deck, we wanted to break down that scale, and we added this, uh, really large stairwell that will invite the community to, you know, walk up and down there if they need to get to the building on foot, uh, or even if we have community events, um, on the parking structure, you can invite the community to come up and use the parking structure and park underneath, if there were ever any community events. So this, again, instead of turning the public away, we wanted a building that more invited them in, uh, and made the building feel more like part of the fabric of the community. So that's, that's generally the, the changes, but we thought it might help for you to see both the before and after in your considerations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
The canopies on High, they're permanent structures.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. They'd be...
So it's not canvas that could...
No.
...rot off in a couple of years and wouldn't be replaced?
They would be steel structures with aluminum, uh, roofs, and tiebacks, and things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's much more keeping that area, so thank you very much for taking another look at it, and I think it will be an asset.
Thank you.
Not only to the corridor, but just to the functionality of, of the neighborhood.
Mr. LaHondro said to me, "I'm glad I denied you." And I said, ironically, I think, so am I.
Well, we have to give the developer credit, too, in that, uh, giving over space for a retail, um, really does a lot for, um, engage or, or activating this building along High Street, um, and, uh, and also provides a, a, a really interesting entry into the, the building, although it's been explained, most of the people coming to the medical offices are gonna come from the parking deck.
Yeah, a lot of patients require flat parking with easy walkable surfaces, so that's, you know, that's there for them as well, but they'll have this opportunity as well.
Yeah, I think a lot of people in the neighborhood have missed, uh, the cafeteria at the Martha Jefferson Hospital, and, and for a long time have missed the retail at, uh, the old Medical Arts Pharmacy, where you could go in and, you know, buy a birthday card, or, or a box of candy as a gift, or, you know, some...
Our development team.
A fume or something, you know? And there just hasn't been anything in that vicinity for a long time, so I think it really adds to livability of the corridor, as well as the appearance of it.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you the question I asked Jody, and, and it's just, I'm going to sound paranoid, but it's kind of the times we live in.
Sure.
Um, a little bit concerned when I look at, at the, um, the parking deck, and that there's a straight shot for a vehicle to approach the, the door.
Okay, so are you...
And I think it's this drawing that may, and I understand it's a medical building, and that you're going to, some people have limited mobility and are going to need to be dropped off at the door, but I'm wondering about something more of a loop where you're parallel to the door for that drop-off, rather than being able to directly advance and charge towards a building?
I think...
Just the times we live in.
Yeah, I, I think that the final configuration of the parking on the top of the deck will take in consideration the vehicular drop-off and the proper bollards and protections for the building. Uh, you know, this gives the spirit of what it'll be, um, and the amount of vegetation, and, and what we're trying to attempt, but there will be sort of follow-on, you know, reviews from a site plan standpoint related to some of the protections and things I think you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm just...
Yeah, I, no, I get it, makes a lot of sense.
I can copy some over there, bollards.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, I'm not even so much asking for bollards as, you know, I've spent a lot of my life taking people to and from medical offices, so I'm very sensitive to wanting to, you know, drop grandma off right at, right at the door, or the person that's got, you know, crutches. You wanna get right to that door, but I'm just thinking more of, of being parallel to the door, rather than a straight shot to it.
I think you'll have that opportunity on the lower level of parking.
As well.
Because then you'd, then you'd be able to go into an elevator, come right up?
That's the completely covered, so, um, anybody, you know, with mobility issues will likely be coming, uh, that direction anyway, especially, you know, when there's weather presence.
Yeah, I just think, yeah, I just think we need to be really cognizant of the weaponizing of vehicles and not providing any opportunities for that. It's unfortunate, but that was the times we live in.
Yes, thank you. And that was Dan Martin for the record, from Innovate.
Thank you. Did you get that, Carol? His name?
Dan Martin.
Dan Martin, that's right. He also speaking. Okay. Any more discussion? You all, you two were not privy to the original discussion for this, sorry about that, but this is much better.
Yeah, the before and after was helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or a motion?
I believe I have a motion.
Okay, fantastic.
I'm trying to find it.
I move to approve, with staff recommended conditions, the Entrance Corridor Certificate of Appropriateness application for the new medical office building and parking deck at nine one six, comma, nine twenty, East High Street, and three twenty-five, Tenth Street, Northeast. Oh, and I'm now going to read those recommendations. Uh, one, the ERB should view material samples. Cut sheets for material should be submitted. Behold, I see them, I see them before me. Two, all glass should be specified as clear, with minimum seventy percent visible light transmittance, call that VLT. Three, signage requires separate permits and approvals. All signage shall appear to be lit white at night. Four, rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened within appurtenance. Good word.
Ooh, terrible word.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, do we have any further discussion? Not about the word "appurtenance."
Can I ask, is that clarifying that you looked at, is, uh, what, what's your, what's your pleasure relative to the sample board?
Let's get through the motion, and then...
Make sure that...
Do we need to approve that separately?
Yeah, is that part of the motion?
It is part of the motion, it's...
I thought it was...
The materials? Are we doing that separately?
So...
Should view, so that sounds like the future.
It, it sounds like a future, yeah.
Should view the materials, the material's right there.
They're, they're here.
You all had the opportunity to view them.
Can we see them one more time?
Yes.
And then say we have to approve them in this motion, just view them.
Oh, but, well, then, when would they be approved?
Well, the, I don't know that they were available before, now they're available. If, this would be a good time to do that, since it's before you.
I can't read the, the, what's on the top, so would, uh, discuss those?
These are the different aluminum colors, so you've got, you know, the window frames, the com-...
These are the different aluminum colors. So you've got, you know, the window frames, the composite panel for the cornice, and then the aluminum cornice and sunshades. And then I would say this would also be the color that, that we discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Standing scene. And, you know, standard brick, standard stone matches. No objection.
We might could object to something.
Well, what do you think of the brick?
There might be an objection, just hang tight. So, uh, we have a motion-
So does the motion include the materials now?
The, well, I, I, I mean, we'd have to amend the motion because the motion is for approval with the conditions that staff, uh, recommended, which are the ERB should review, should view the material samples. So-
View and approve.
Should we make two votes on that? I'm confused at how we got to there. Uh, and then, so the motion is for the recommendations.
It seems to me we should-
First off, do we all agree on the materials we just saw by voice acclamation? Aye. No? Anyone no? Okay, so could we change that to... Do we need to strike that?
You could, you could say, um, the ERB approves the material samples as presented at the meeting.
Okay. So we would need you to amend your motion.
I would gladly make that amendment.
Okay, and then to second to the amendment? Do you second the amendment to the motion?
I accept, oh.
It's like-
I second-
I second the amendment to the motion. Are we, are we good on that motion?
Okay.
So. Ms. Creasy, will you call Rome?
Mr. LaHondre?
Aye.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yep.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Are you sure you've got the conditions?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for coming back. Madam Chair, I would just like to reiterate once again that technically, technically, if we were supposed to approve those materials, we should have had them before tonight. I hear you. So I just-
We agreed on last month as well.
Oh, okay. Well, I wasn't here, but I just want to say just for future purposes, not only for you, but just in general, because we also have something else that was submitted today. It is not fair to us as a commission or to the public who has to review this information as well and make a public comment on it that we are still receiving submissions at almost eleven o'clock. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda-
Okay, Brandon, the first file.
Is for the Entrance Corridor Certificate of Appropriateness for Lexington Avenue and East, East High Street, otherwise known as Tarleton Oak. Do we have any late submissions for information that we'd like to review right now? Before we get started? Anybody else have any submissions you want to approve? Bring it up. Last call. Okay, good. Now that we've got that out of the way, Mr. Schimpf, no.
Need to let her know right away?
Um, and I just-
You knew you were going to spend the evening with us.
What this is, is, uh-
Okay. Hang tight.
I'm hanging.
So go ahead and say that.
So I, I live in a home on Lexington Avenue, so I don't see a way to be impartial. So I'm going to leave and recuse myself.
Is it four-eleven?
No.
It's the only property within the EC, but-
That's okay. That's fine. Uh, we'll come get you for the next one. Fantastic. Wait, late submission information?
No. These are, uh, these are two renderings and just, again, for, just to help while we're having a discussion, have it in front of you. These are renderings of the project, nothing new. And then the last page is just, again, a reminder of, of how the entrance corridor overlay fits within the, the landscape of this project. So I just offer those as comfortable, convenient reminders. As far as reviewing the materials, um, yeah, that's something I guess, I'll have to, I don't know, I've kind of pirated a lot again from what Mary Joy used to write. So I don't know what normally would happen with the review of materials, but we can get that straightened out. I agree, it's not good to look at something at night of.
Do you have the review materials with you?
I have what you have.
Okay, good. So we're not going to review materials tonight?
Yeah, that is, I'll let, leave that to the applicant to explain.
Okay.
Um, okay. The, um, again, this project, Tarleton Oak, it encompasses almost an entire block, just over two acres. It's bounded by East High Street, Lexington Avenue, Maple Street, and Eighth Street Northeast. At the southwest corner is eight oh one East High Street. It's an individually protected property and it is not part of this project. The block's southeast corner, uh, it's about six tenths of an acre. That is in the East High Street Entrance Corridor. It's composed of eight fifteen East High Street and four-eleven Lexington Avenue. Eight fifteen East High has a service station and a garage. Uh, both were built in nineteen sixty-four. Both will be demolished for this project. Four-eleven Lexington Avenue is a residence, uh, was constructed in nineteen twenty-four. It and four others there along Lexington Avenue are contributing structures in the Martha Jeff Historic Conservation District. So four-eleven was also part of the BAR review, uh, in May. All five houses will be retained as a residential component of this project. And again, in May, the BAR reviewed the portion of the project that's within that Historic Conservation District. They approved the Certificate of Appropriateness, and that was for Phase One of the project and as it relates to those five, five parcels. So, to the project, it features a new five-story office building, fronting on High Street, and an associated two-level parking structure fronting on Maple Street and Eighth Street Northeast. The office building is almost entirely within the entrance corridor. A par, a portion of the new parking structure is within the EC, but it was included in the BAR's review, and BAR is the more stringent of the two reviewing bodies. There is a Phase Two anticipated, and that's a, a residential structure on the top of the parking structure. That phase, when, when it comes forward, will also be reviewed by the BAR. In reviewing the EC guidelines, and I offer as consideration, and this is relative to that proposed office building primarily and related streetscape within the entrance corridor. The massing scale and height are appropriate. Architectural features, design materials, orientation to the corner is appropriate, are appropriate. The design and arrangement of the buildings, the preservation and incorporation of historic structures, the overall project landscaping and the streetscape elements are appropriate. The project will include connectivity through the block. The street trees, landscaping, articulated building facade, and street lighting will enhance the pedestrian experience. And also during the BAR review, I, I asked them for their comments on the entire project. I thought that would be helpful. And, um, I know I included some of them in the report, but just to reiterate, they were overwhelmingly positive about this. And some of the comments included, uh, they complimented the applicant for keeping the five historic houses. They said the office building and garage provided those houses with breathing room. They said this is an improvement on an underutilized site at a key intersection. Uh, one comment was, this design has the look of a civic building, not a private office building. Comments about the scale and massing be, being appropriate, and there was compliments on the permeability of the site. And with that, staff does recommend approval of the requested COA and with the following conditions for your consideration. Once again, review and approval of material samples. I want to comment on, I, I know I mentioned, uh, the issue of the artificial stucco and the EPHO systems, and that's part of our guidelines. I know, uh, I was asked about that today and responded, but just to kind of clarify and reiterate that, our guidelines identify stucco as a common local building materials. And that stucco being in its traditional form as a, a cement coating, uh, on the exterior of a building. The guidelines advise against using artificial stucco. And they don't actually use the word "stucco," but that's what they're speaking about in this EPHO system. In the past, last few decades, most you know, faux stucco has commonly been a little more than a styrofoam panels and they skim it with a coat of colored liquid. Cheap materials, poorly installed, prone to dents and damage. But today's faux stuckers are not all the same, and, and what is proposed on this project may be of higher quality. And, um, I was going to leave it to the applicant to plead his case or their case on that. All glass must be specified as clear. And again, we have historically defined clear as no less than seventy percent VLT. Again, require that the signage appear to be lit white at night. Again, it will require separate permits and approvals. Require that rooftop appurtenance, uh, I'm sorry, rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened behind the appurtenance. And I also included in the staff report, three recommendations from the BAR. And, uh, first one was increase the number of street trees along Maple and Eighth Street, soften the transition between the project and eight oh one East High Street, and consider the use of trees propagated from the Tarleton Oak. I spoke with the applicant since, and, and there's concern that we not have conflicting, um, conditions, requirements, recommendations between the ERB and the BAR. But, and I, and I understand that, but I want to stress that the three items that the BAR made, these were recommendations, they were not conditions of approval. So, uh, they are not requirements. The, and I want to just finally speak to, um, the use of, um, trees propagated from the Tarleton Oak. And I, I walked the site, I saw that there are some saplings around, possibly they can be used. And I think in the discussions, it was sort of viewed as use those trees as the street trees. And, you know, maybe that's not the, the way we intended it, and it shouldn't have come out like that. But, and I was thinking that the more appropriate, probably the more feasible use of, of, of those trees from that original oak would be to incorporate them elsewhere on the site. And, um, that would allow, and I spoke with the applicant about this earlier, said it would allow them some flexibility on what they chose for the street trees. And it would meet the intent, which was what we discussed at the BAR, and that was to, to preserve on this site some vestige of that, um, the original Tarleton Oak. And if this is agreeable, it would be helpful, uh, to clarify that. And, and, and I assure you, would not conflict with what the BAR's intent was. With that, hope that was short and sweet. Any questions?
So as I understand it, the first Tarleton Oak was murdered, uh, and there's a second Tarleton Oak?
There's a couple. Um, there was, and I actually found in the, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven. I don't know if a lot of us were here remembering that tree, and it was huge. And, um, for various reasons, it was taken down. And, uh, but there is a tree in the front. I don't know what age, but also as you kind of walk around the site, you can see some oak saplings coming up. And the closest oak I found was over in the cemetery, and it was a different type. So, um, so it's a, you know, it is the Tarleton Oak project. It would be great to incorporate it into it. I see it as a, a historic preservation solution, and I think that was the intent of the BAR.
So will this be retaining Tarleton Oak Two, or would this be contemplating Tarleton Oak Three?
Oaks are funny, you know? When they drop their acorns, it's a somewhat irregular, uh, pattern. But if it's possible to, um, have some assurance that, uh, you know, a tree could be identified or the one that's there, uh, if that could be properly pulled out and relocated, I think that's worth discussion. I don't know how you codify that, but I, I think it's worth some discussion.
It wasn't murdered, it was really more like an assisted suicide.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. That's what I heard.
Sanctioned by Mitch Venieris, who was the ranking arborist of the time. He made many impassioned pleas to let it die with dignity.
So do we have an applicant who would like to make a presentation? Do you want to hear a presentation, or do you want to ask more questions? Any questions?
Oh, I did have a question. Was the BA, did the BAR have a requisite role, or was that more of a courtesy thing that you just asked for their input? I mean, do, do they have any-
Well, they are-
skin in the game here?
If you look at that, uh, the plan, um, if you think of the opposite corner to the north, that, and also including four-eleven, that's the, the section that was in the Historic Conservation District. And it kind of caught the back end of the parking garage. So we took a hard look at that structure and some, some recommendations were made in that regard. And, you know, we could have, we decided to run it through both, and it gave us a good opportunity to sort of, you know, in all honesty, having, after last month and, and discussions on Tenth and East High, was, is an opportunity to float this to the BAR and say, hey, what do you all think? You know, um, we didn't want to get carried away, uh, but it did offer some, some feedback that I think was helpful in, in preparing the staff report.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. But it doesn't, does it have to go back to them?
The only thing that they requested was that when Phase Two comes, they, they would like to see that. And that's the addition on the top of the, the parking structure.
Right.
And their issues there were, um, that it have, that it be permeable to that, um, to the, I guess that's Maple Street there along the cemetery. And that's part of what they'll look at when that comes forward.
Okay, good, thanks.
Would the applicant like to come forward? And do you have a presentation?
All right.
It should have been preloaded.
David?
Hello?
People are going to come into town and think they're in the office.
I know. Or the library.
It does look like a library.
They grabbed the USB for their computer for the previous presentation. It's right here.
I don't need to, ours is already on the-
If only you could just drive through there and Wayne would be back there to fix your computer.
Is this what you're-
I need to put some bollards there, keep them moving.
At least that has the steps there.
I guess there are steps. Yeah, okay.
Sorry, y'all.
I saw it too.
I think it was just the way I was perceiving that drawing.
Yeah, it's a shame that it's a whole office.
Well, he said, this computer's not even turning on. It's not powering up is the issue. Yes, one of our laptops.
I think it's kind of a shame.
Killed the computer.
It makes it kind of long and boring, long. Cause you would get the full effect. Just think of these little ones right there. Little lady and pastiche.
Little balcony to get edicts.
Yeah.
Andrew to the rescue. All right, well, good evening, folks. Um, Ashley Davies here again. Thank you very much for hearing our project tonight, um, the Tarleton Oak redevelopment. Um, I am here tonight with our project team. Should you have any questions? Jennifer Feist is our owner's representative. Also have Valerie, Valerie Long from the Williams-Mullin team. Andrew Moore is here from Glave and Holmes. And then we also have Frank Hancock, our landscape architect on the project for any landscape-specific questions. Frank Hancock, our landscape architect on the project for any landscape specific questions. But we open with this rendering of the project that really gives you a perspective of the transformation of the intersection of High Street as it curves around the site. That, we're in the Downtown North zoning district, we're just a block or so up from the project you were previously discussing, so lots of changes afoot within that zoning corridor. And as Jeff mentioned, we had the pleasure of presenting last month to the Board of Architectural Review. This project, right now, has a lot of parking. You can see, you know, vast areas of asphalt that are going to be transformed into our office building with retail space on the front and then the back portion is a structured parking area that's partially buried underground. We have the benefit of the grades to work with on Maple and Eighth and there will be future residential on top of that. And the way the Downtown North zoning district works, it actually incorporates a great transition down into the neighborhood. So, on the primary street of East High, you have a five-story height maximum, but as you get down to your linking streets and the more residential areas, you have a three-story maximum. And as Jeff mentioned, we did have kind of the various overlapping overlays. So, we were very pleasantly, not surprised, but really pleased with the BAR meeting last month. They did grant our certificate of appropriateness for the parking structure in the rear, but they were so overwhelmingly complimentary of the office building itself as well and just how it really addresses the pedestrian environment, how it's a gateway to the downtown area of the city and just how well articulated the space is and very complimentary of the preservation of the existing residences along Lexington. These photos just show you some of the surrounding context. I'm sure many of you are familiar with that north downtown area, but there, it's interesting in that it's really a patchwork of different property sizes, different heights of buildings. You have the Core Knowledge Building, which is an individually protected property. You have our Conservation District homes that are being preserved. You've got the existing, the existing service station, which will be demolished. You've got the Oakwood Cemetery. You also have the Tarleton Square Apartments, which are quite a large building as well as the old Martha Jefferson Hospital and the SNL building, the old SNL building is very close by as well. These show kind of the rear area of the Conservation District homes and that's kind of the focus there. This is a survey of the existing conditions of the property. And this shows you how the site is going to change. So, on, along the East High Street corridor, you can see the proposed office building and on the backside is that two-level parking area. So, this is all the Phase One redevelopment, but you can also begin to see the permeability of the site and the attention that's been paid to really transforming what was a lot of asphalt and gravel to really pedestrian-friendly areas. So, I will hand it over to our design team because I know they have a lot to say as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Andrew Moore with Glave and Holmes Architecture and thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate your service. One of the things that is notable about our site plan is the degree of permeability. So, that was very key to our client and as a way to engage the surrounding neighborhood. So, you can see that there's here a linear park that's being constructed behind the historic homes to allow residents and others and the occupants of the site to move through freely as well around this direction. Also, the building design itself, the office building is designed to have a free airway that goes right through it, so allowing permeability through the site this way as well. A couple of notes from our presentation with the BAR was some enhancements to the site. The BAR requested that we consider adding some street trees, additional street trees along Maple Street, which we've added here, as well as a few trees where we could along Eighth Street. And then to soften the transition between the proposed office building and the Core Knowledge Building on the corner, some additional landscaping in that area. These are some of the site design elements that are intended to be included with the The building floor plan, the ground floor is probably most relevant to the streetscape, which again, shows the breezeway going through the building, public accessible breezeway, as well as a ground floor retail space intended here on the corner. Walking up through the building, this is the upper level, third level, fourth level has some exterior balcony spaces and then the fifth level is set back and has a continuous terrace around the perimeter. And finally, the rooftop has a roof, an open terrace area, roof garden on the top. This is the rendering that Ashley showed earlier. And then we've added a second rendering that shows a street level view. This is the view you would see as you were coming around the corner on High Street and you can see the pedestrian scale entrance here that would lead to that retail space intended to provide perhaps a relationship to the adjacent houses. In terms of the exterior design, the package does a pretty good job of describing the design intent, which is to take cues from traditional design. The classical elements you can see have been reduced and toned down to kind of the bare minimum, still reminiscent of the classical language and the proportioning, but yet more refined and restrained into more of a contemporary idiom. The basic materials are brick, the glass, metal panel, the stucco that Jeff mentioned is up above, and then we have some wood on a sunshade pergola at the roof level. This is the High Street elevation. And we've ghosted in the building so you can see, you know, as it turns the corner and is receding from you. So, this is what you would see orthogonal to High Street. This is taking a step back and seeing the relationship to the Core Knowledge Building. This is the west elevation, is if you were standing at the Core Knowledge Building looking back at the office building. This is the north elevation, as if you were standing in the parking deck. And then this is the piece with the retail space and then showing the historic houses as they march down Lexington. So, I don't want to provide new information to you unnecessarily, but we do have physical samples that support the images that you can see in your package if you'd like to see those. So, we brought those with us tonight, we can hand those to you if you'd like to see So, this is, this is the brick. This is a sample of the stucco material, which again, is similar to the... To the previous applicant who had noted that this is a stucco that's applied to a solid substrate in a semititious manner.
Is this actually this?
That is just showing the finish, the finish of the stucco itself. So, that's the, that's the, what you're looking at is the actual finish that you would touch. Behind it would be the base coat and then the metal mesh and then the substrate itself.
Does this brick match the other brick down the street? Does that matter?
No, I don't think we want it to match.
Recast.
Much less orange than in the renderings.
I thought they were going for UVA.
Dude looks similar.
Yep.
Looks like brick.
Yep. I know our time is up, I have one thing to say about the glass, but, okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, the, the, the conditions that were proposed include this notion of clear glass being seventy percent visible light transmittance. And I know that that is sort of entered into your standards. We would request that you consider flexing that a little bit. I have here two samples. The one with the label on it, this is a seventy percent VLT. This one is sixty-two. There's a significant energy savings with using sixty-two versus seventy. In architectural language, both of these are considered clear glass, which is actually what your guidelines say, they don't say seventy percent. So, I offer these to you, you know, compare them. In our opinion, they're pretty close and for our client's sake and for the sake of the environment, having some energy savings, I think, is in the public's interest, so. This is seven, this is sixty-two.
Do we have expert opinion on that? I don't know that.
Brian and Jody.
I think you can see that the sixty-two is perceptively darker than the seventy, but that's just me.
Can I ask why we care? I'm sorry, this is what everybody's asking. Why this is matters.
The genesis of this, and this is going back through what I found about the glass discussion. Actually, Mary Joy and Margaret Houschevsky had worked together on kind of defining clear glass. And there's a proposal that they, I think jointly, you all went in whatever iteration you were back then and the county's BAR or ARB looked at this presentation and the consultant identified anything above sixty percent as clear. Somewhere along the way, and I cannot tell you when, the seventy became the norm in our staff reports, both for entrance corridor and BAR. I'll also will say is that this is a source of hot debate when it comes up. The Dairy Central folks are contemplating going to a sixty-eight glass and they had some meetings with some of the BAR folks that caused quite a stir. So, it is a, it's not an easy one to take on. The other thing that's going on, and this is true, is there is, I don't know whether it's all the construction happening in the world, but there is an issue with availability of these glass types. The short answer is...
Which one, the sixty-two or the seventy?
Right. Well, it's, and the architects probably speak to that. It's, I can't tell you without standing outside or standing in a greenhouse made of one or the other. I will say that the other piece that was a concern is that glass not be, particularly on the downtown mall and in shopping centers, that we not have folks walking along the storefront seeing their reflection. This is an office building, so possibly that's an angle versus a storefront in, you know, in a mall or downtown. I don't know how to advise, I hesitate to break from the norm that I've inherited, but I, it is an issue that I think BAR and the ERB have to have discussion about as we go forward. That's the best I can offer you.
It has a lot to do with how you perceive the openings in the building through reflectivity and transparency of the opening. It's not, a darker window lets you have less sense of the interior of the building and the activity in the interior of the building. It's a much less traditional appearance than a, than a glass that's clearer and more transparent. Now, admittedly, even an insulated pane is going to diminish that visibility no matter what, but it's, it has a lot to do with how you relate as a pedestrian to the building. It becomes more opaque, more forbidding. Those are, those are the qualities that a darker tint imparts to a window while providing the light savings. So, especially in a historic context, absolutely, you know, you want as clear a glass as possible. Yeah. I'll leave it to you all to decide, given this context, whether that's a reasonable standard to apply or not, so.
I'd hate to see us get off track with this glass issue. And we got, we're...
No, no, I'm just...
No, no, not you, I mean, it was brought up and all of a sudden, it's become the most important thing. This is not, this is not the right place to be looking at one glass to another. It needs to be outside, it needs to be different kinds of sun exposures, different kinds, yes. It, this is a bigger question.
I'd rather spend our time trying to find affordable housing in this town, whether looking around to see at twenty-five miles an hour as I'm going down the street if this glass is opaque enough. But that's just, I mean, I understand.
You can say that, except that the city's about to spend a boatload of cash right here making this a pedestrian-friendly intersection. So, it's one, you can't just dismiss it by saying you'd rather spend your time on something else. It is an important part of the obligation as an entrance review board to consider this. Because it's an important part of the building design, so.
And this is, this is one of the more, this is probably the most pedestrian experience that we get on an entrance corridor review board in a perfect world. This would have, this would have been in a district and it's just politics and a lot of other things in the past that flipped this to the entrance corridor rather than the BAR. So, this would be one I would go to the wall for to have the clearer glass because there will be pedestrians walking by there. I think, and I don't know who the tenants are going to be, but I would imagine there's going to be a lot of pedestrian back and forth from this building to Court Square and and other office buildings and, you know, it's a block where I walk. So, I think, you know, it's not Barracks Road or Two Fifty, it's really downtown. So, because it has that, it wouldn't be the, but I agree with you, it's not where we need to be putting our emphasis, but it's also not the place where we depart from the convention.
Yeah.
Because we need it here more than we do in most places.
I recognize it may be a larger question, an issue that needs to be hammered out, but for this particular project, we would even suggest maybe a compromise would be ground floor seventy and then if you could use sixty-two on the upper floors. Again, it's, when I say it's energy savings, it's like a twenty-five to thirty percent difference. Oftentimes are, and we actually, I mean, our firm does a lot of projects that are traditionally designed and clear glass is our norm. And we frequently talk to our mechanical engineers and they're like, can you please make it tinted? And we're like, no, it needs to be clear. But there's a big difference between, again, the heat gain of a seventy percent and a sixty-two, such that it requires you to upsize your HVAC equipment, that sort of thing. So, anyway, I just offer that as a potential compromise. If the issue is really the pedestrian scale, make the ground floor transparent and then slightly lower the standard for the, for the upper floors, which helps with the energy.
I don't think we can sit here as residents evaluating something that really engineers should be looking at and deciding on within, because it has, it has to do with systems. It's not just the glass itself. It's the systems, it's the, the framing that the glass is going in, thermal break versus other types. It's, I'm sorry, we've gotten off track.
And I, it's, when I was asked this, my exact words were, that's a stretch, you know, to ask for something else. My concern is that the seventy has been used so almost exclusively and pushed for in a lot of reviews, particularly BAR issues. Well, that's mostly what I've been involved in. um, particularly BAR issues. Uh, well, that's mostly what I've been involved in. Um, you have West Second, which is an enormous amount of glass, and, you know, that's gonna get a push for seventy. Uh, the Tech Center, Dairy Central, uh, I think they only looked at going down to sixty-eight. So, I, I know this is not something to hammer out tonight. Is there a way in which, and I leave it to the applicant, can this be, um, we've looked at the design, the permeability, site et cetera, et cetera, streetscape. Um, there's appears to be some support for the building. Um, how does this relative to the glass get, um, moved, uh, to another time or another decision-making, uh, opportunity? I, I, because I, 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 my concern, again, talking to the applicant today, was you wanna leave tonight with some sort of approval, and, and bringing this up potentially jeopardizes that. So, um, whether this could be segmented, I don't, I, I leave it to you all. But I, I think, personally, this thing needs, we need more, uh, of a discussion and evaluation before we go from seventy to sixty-two or even seventy to sixty-eight, given all of the other projects in which immediately this is going to be, uh, hey, you guys set it for here, I want you to reevaluate that.
Why would we depart from the convention for this project when we have it for others?
Uh, and, I would-
I mean, what, what's your motivation to-
My motivation?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm just offering perspectives. On one side, the guidelines say nothing about seventy. But on the other, it is a, it is a, um, a standard that we've, we've, we've tacitly adopted, and I think, um, until there's general agreement to, to revise that, I don't think we should. Um, and-
Okay.
That's, that's my opinion.
If we don't have it written anywhere, then what is there to revise?
Well, we do, in the guidelines, right?
No, we don't, no.
Seventy's not, but it, it does alter, uh, decisions and, uh, recommendations that are made for a significant amount of projects and conditions that have been placed on a significant amount of projects, so, um-
I think we should defer to the BAR that does, you know, eighty to ninety percent of these, and we do the others, and, and then we might have a different attitudes for those that are in proximity to IPPs or historic districts and something else out on the highway.
Right.
I mean, that would be my-
I could not in good conscience say-
Initial, initial impression, but I think they have more time and expertise to deal with that. I mean, it, it's more relevant to them than it is to us generally.
Can we do that?
Ask the BAR to address EC guidelines?
No, no, but I mean, to address the glass, and they have, they have their standard, and then we would look, we would look at their guidance and make our decision.
You're talking about the standard of-
Not for this case, just in general.
Not for this case in general, what the, what the percentage of glass is.
Yeah, 'cause I felt like Jeff was kinda generalizing beyond this particular instance.
And put it in writing. If it's seventy, it's seventy.
Yeah.
If it's not, then... I guess I have a, a bit of a problem where we're saying, we're a green city, we want this, this, and this, and the guy's telling us right there, you're saving thirty percent electricity with an eight percent difference in glass color. I understand it's historic, what we're talking about.
It's not historic, it's brand new.
Well, what I'm saying is, for history purposes and-
No.
The, the, the color of the glass. I understand that it's a, a standard.
No, I, I was saying, this is a design review board. The glass is a significant component of the facade of this building. It needs to be as carefully considered as the brick and the stone and the metal. That's all I'm saying. So, just dismissing eight percent difference in the appearance doesn't adequately address the effect of that change on the overall appearance of this building. So, you do need to consider it, historic consideration criteria or not, as a significant component of the facade of this building, because you're doing design review as the entrance corridor review board. That's the reason that you need to consider the appearance of the glass.
And while I hear that, as I look at that, and I understand we can't look at it in this context, we're talking about eight percent, and again, we're just talk, we just made a statement in the, one before, how we're trying to be a green city and, and all of these things, and, and the guy's telling us thirty percent difference in, 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 in energy savings.
But you started tonight off by saying, be careful of the noise and be careful of the claims made out of context.
I didn't say that.
Someone did here.
Right.
Out of context. Oh, maybe it was the presenter there. Uh, he, he made a good point. I mean, I, I would like to see this in context, with units, in, in an assembly. Um, and, uh, I, I'm just not gonna sit here and, and, and take it as a casual statement out of context.
Would it be possible to defer this and get a weigh-in from BAR on this? Because I, I don't trust myself on this.
Here's what I'd like to ask. One quick question before we do that. Is this new information coming for us right now at eleven o'clock? Yes? Okay.
So, when the BAR does have issues like this-
Tania, where are you on this?
They will approve things, they'll approve things with the condition that certain aspects return for additional review, so that the process can keep moving on. Approve the project with the condition that the glass be submitted for additional consideration, and just move the project off your table and get it out of here. And it takes five minutes, you can-
Well, I, this is almost twice that somebody's been probably almost denied for last-minute changes, so I caution that, again.
We, we-
Third time tonight.
Third time.
Just to be clear, we, the reason we brought it was because of the, the staff comment. You know, he would, again, the guidelines don't say seventy percent. The staff comment says seventy percent.
So, the guidelines, no, clear glass, and I'm not sure what the history of all of this is either. However, however, if, um, it sounds like staff, meaning staff with city and county, took an opportunity to work to define that in a, in a manner. Now, maybe that needs to be looked at, which it sounds like that is a potential discussion in the future, but that's where we are right now.
It's a process, it's not just us tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think anecd- uh, anecdotally, from my point of view, it's been a big deal with the BAR, from what, what I understand. Brian was on the BAR. None of the rest of us have been on recently. Um, well, but I think we should return to talk about, I mean, we have a complex design at a major intersection, and we're talking about glass, the glass.
Yeah.
So.
But we also have staff recommendations and a staff report, and information that was presented that we've had all week to review, and I think that's what we should stay with to review.
So, are we into questions for the applicant?
We can be.
Okay. Um, for the underground floor plan, uh, on the high street elevation and for the block of office building, um, and, and, and a lot of the discussion about porosity and, and, uh, within and outside the building, we're, Jenny and I are kinda chatting earlier. We're a little surprised that there's not more porosity between the high street sidewalk and the office use inside, instead of having to go around to the, the grand entrance. Um, is, why?
Well, it's, it's, uh, conceived as an office building, uh, which typically has a controlled entrance location, and in terms of its architectural form, I would refer back to more civic buildings that do tend to have a central main entrance. So, that was the intent. It's not a ground floor, you know, retail space that has doors out to the sidewalk like you would have for storefront.
And wouldn't that add more interest and, and more accessibility to the building?
Certainly. It would certainly add that, uh, if the intent was to have continuous retail on the ground floor.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Feist. I'm the, I am, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. So, I, I can tell you that we've worked on this and we've thought about it for over a year. And what we want is for the neighbors, the people at the CFA Institute, I want people to be able to walk across this project and behind to the downtown mall and across the parking structure. I can also tell you, I've wa, I've worked on the downtown mall for seventeen years. I've had a purse snatcher come through my office twice. We caught him on camera, and the police know who he is. So, I want the project to be porous, but I don't want the building to be porous, so that people can come in the building from, you know, various locations. We've got this entrance here, you can come in from the parking structure, you can come in from the street. What's important to us is I want the neighbors to feel good about going to the retail. I want somebody to be able to walk, you know, feel, feel free to come and eat their lunch behind who works at CFA. I kinda want it to be like, not a civic center certainly, but, you know, something that the community feels good about using and being a part of and entering and walking through.
Okay, thank you.
I, I appreciate all, all of that, and certainly the security. I, I know of other instances where people have entered buildings and, and, and that hasn't been pleasant. But it just seems like, even from a design solution, that there would be some way to break up the monotony of that long, high-street facade. Um, I'm not asking that you have an entrance, if you don't wanna have an entrance, but there's a, there's a lot of variation in the, in the rest of the, the building and high street, which, which I walk a lot as a pedestrian. It just seems like a long, boring facade, that it, it's not adding any kind of, of interest or, or relief there, um, uh, other than the trees, which I think it's, it's nice that there will be some shade, but it's just a, kind of a long block with, with nothing. And, and yet, that, that stretch of sidewalk might actually have more pedestrian traffic than Lexington or, or the intersection, because I would imagine there'd be a fair amount of walking back and forth to, uh, to Court Square and, and other points. So, that, to me, that, that was the one thing I went to when I looked at this design. The rest of it all seemed to, that it's working. It's certainly placemaking and, and, uh, compatible and meeting the, the guidelines, except for that long expanse, to me. I thought it would be cool if you had a little Palladian loggia or something at the end, but, uh, not, not to make you do something extraordinary, but just something along the high street.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Comment. I, I think the design makes a lot of sense for the site. It's well-chosen. It works well, seems to work well.
Is there a motion?
I think I have a motion. I move to approve a certificate of appropriateness for the components of the Tarleton Oak Project Eight Fifteen East High Street that lie within the East High Street entrance corridor with the following modifications. Sorry, I think that's right. Um, the glass issue goes before the BAR, and they give us a recommendation.
So, we have a motion and the modification. Does that also include the recommendations above from staff?
Yes, it does. Thank you for reminding me.
And then the recommendation of, of the all-glass specified as clear with seventy percent minimum, you would change that to BAR recommendation?
Exactly right.
Okay. Everybody on the, understand that?
Mm-hmm.
So, a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just, is anyone else bothered by the long, high-street, unbroken facade? No?
Oh, no, I am, yeah.
Oh, Jody and I, okay.
Well, somewhat, but I guess we're, you know, we're gonna talk to them like we're currently getting. Um, I think in any other building or any other site that we've, since I've been on the planning commission, that's been, um, especially with Kirk, that's been his thing. Um, it needs to be pedestrian-friendly. You want some type of movement or inner street interaction with the building, but I also understand her, I also see it both ways, that in this case, um, for safety reasons, you kinda only want maybe two main entrances into the building. But it could, I'm, I'm, I'm not an architect, so I can't design that, and especially not at almost twelve AM. Um, but it, maybe it could be something, I don't know if it's seating, or kinda like how they did at Dairy Central, they broke it up, or, you know, with the, the different setbacks throughout the wall, but, um, I could see why. It's the street, yeah.
Some differentiation on the high street, but I wouldn't see that holding up tonight.
Could that be a condition? Did they figure it out?
Can I ask a quick question? What is it, because you've got that forty-five-degree angle that, that cuts that corner.
Mm-hmm.
So, what is the actual, I mean, length of that? Because it, I'm looking at it through.
I mean, it's-
There's no-
It's several.
I don't have a scale.
Several bays long. I don't know. Brian, does that, does it concern you at all? You have-
Not especially.
It doesn't bother you, just Jody and me?
I mean, you've got the two end pavilions-
Fifty.
To provide a little bit of articulation. I think that stretch between the two of them is gonna be unrelenting.
Here's the line.
It's not worth holding this up. It's just kinda boring on the-
I also feel like too, I mean, that is somewhat important. If we're gonna remain those magical words we use, harmonious in the character, um, that's something in, that we are looking for in construction, something that activates the street and is pedestrian-friendly.
And it is opposite a row of three, four houses that all have front doors and front porches, and, so it doesn't really reflect the other side of the street to any extent. The sameness of it, as opposed to the variety of the opposite side of the street. Um, but I'm not suggesting you make any kind of major change to, to that design, just, I would feel better if there was some variation. That gave some visual relief as you, as you're perceiving it or walking along high street.
It's probably over a hundred and fifty feet there.
Hundred and thirty-four.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That little scale method was not as tried and true as I thought.
Anyway, I, I could support the motion if we just added something about, uh, to provide some more attention to the high-street facade.
What, what would you, would that, for a pedestrian scale, I mean, how would you like to word that? And, and, I mean-
Some relief from the, the repetition, the unrelied repetition of the high-street facade.
Does that-
I'm not sure what, how we would interpret that.
I, I don't know either.
Yeah. I don't either, because I, I can't design it for them, but I imagine the architect gets it.
So, uh, we have a motion for approval with the conditions, uh, taking the glass to the BAR, and we have a second for that. Um, are you suggesting a friendly amendment?
Just an amendment.
Just amendment, not very friendly.
Doesn't have to be friendly.
Okay, are you suggesting that-
As I understand it, we all have to vote on it, so if it gets voted up or down.
All right.
Can I ask a question before you complete the motion? Um, it sounds like you're setting, you're setting up to make a recommendation about high-street redesign. How do you envision us meeting that requirement? Like, what's the mutually acceptable way for us to do that?
Break the wall up.
But, but my interpretation of that may be different than what yours is, so, I mean, to avoid us having to come back and present it to you again, what's the, what's the key?
I actually have an idea. Uh, we are, we are in sync, I think. Um, public art? A piece of public art? Something?
Is there space?
Hundred and thirty feet.
We could add streetscape elements.
Yeah, that's, I think the decision would be a streetscape element or an architectural element, and an architectural element- element and an architectural element would maybe come across as false on that wall, whereas some sort of streetscape element, art, I don't, God forbid, a bench, something, an element that 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 created some change along the way. And maybe if you could clarify that, but I I'll again reiterate what, you know, my conversations with the applicant, recommendations are difficult to, you know, so if it's something you want and the more clarity you can offer, the better off we'll be, we will all be.
Jay, if you want a bench, now's the time to get it, since you're walking up and down there so much, you may want to sit down.
I only live seven blocks away. I don't think I need to sit down just yet. Maybe in fifteen years I'll need to sit down.
A streetscape element and what we're talking about, something within landscaping, something within the sidewalk, the lighting, the trees, however, but it's it's it separates it at least from an architectural element or, I mean, but I just offer those ways to define.
Thanks.
I could take the streetscape element.
Do you feel comfortable making the motion to say a streetscape element that with the final approval coming before the, no, not the B A R.
No, 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 no.
They'd shoot me.
Mr. Werner, do you, do you want to do that? I mean, is that, does that make you comfortable? He he looks at it and approves it, we're good?
Just leave it alone.
Well, no, I'm 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 just trying to get.
I don't really think the streetscape element does it. I think it's that the architectural design for High Street is too repetitive and doesn't give any visual relief or interest as you walk down that long block. And the the rest of the building has a lot of differentiation and articulation and gestures to the Lexington Street houses, and yet High Street is the major street. You know, this this is creating a new place and and I like that and and creating something at the intersection, but the area that we're kind of used to perceiving now will be dull and boring and the Tarl, the other Tarleton building is dull and boring and and that's what bothers me when we have a lot of, a lot of thought and interest has gone into this and I just think High Street demands a little more attention.
You have a lot of clear glass.
A lot of clear glass, yeah. And I understand why you don't want to have an entrance there and it's your right to have your your primary entrance, but I think you could do something architectural there to just differentiate that facade somewhat. That's that's all I'd like to see.
And I I I see what you're saying now. You've got this kind of mimic to go along with the the houses and you've got the the corner, but then it's kind of like the, kind of like the dairy, kind of like the dairy where they they modulated that building to kind of mimic.
Yeah, if if you live or work in one of those three or four buildings there, you're just looking across at the same facade and and High Street is really our our major street.
I may not be able to convince you, but I will say that there was a lot of thought put into the way that this facade is articulated. It is a civic scale building, you know, we we could have made a building that had a false sense of scale, in other words, a sense of like a series of porches or something like that. I don't think that would, it'll have been superficial. You know, all of this traditional proportioning is all very intentionally human scaled, so you have a series of.
And and that's very successful.
Clear glass windows as you're walking along High Street that I think will provide a lot of visual interest in your pedestrian experience, even though you don't have doors and entrances to stores there.
Do you have that that elevation?
I do.
Again?
The other direction. So this is, you know, scale of a person, this is your experience at the ground level. In my opinion, that's a fairly active facade.
To me, that just made it worse.
Well, then we'll go back to the other one.
So we have a motion on the table. For approval that does not include anything about the High Street site. We can call the motion, see what happens?
It's going to take a while. They might just think about it, you know? They might want to come back. Because what it's doing is it's making a street that wants to be a primary street, a side street. That's a side elevation on a pri, that's what bothers me about it. It it's the side of the building on a street where everything else is fronting it. That's what the issue is for me.
You've convinced me. Okay.
Has it been seconded?
It has, yeah.
Okay, so we're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
And I don't want to hold this up anymore at midnight, but I just think it's kind of important for the experience of that street, which is one of our important streets.
And I I'm, I have more objections than just the High Street experience. I'm I'm going to be voting against this because I find it to be a very cold, civic, dehumanizing kind of experience that I don't think is appropriate for the entry corridor.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Ms. Krizy, will you call roll?
So what are we voting on?
Right now, the vote is for approval.
Yeah, could, could we vote on whether anybody else wants to have them come back for anything on High Street?
Well, if it doesn't pass, it's been not approved.
Okay, well, because I don't want to vote against the project. I just want to vote against the High Street.
Well, it's not about the project, it's about the E R B corridor, which is what we're voting on. We're not voting whether this is, we're happy with it, I mean, and we can make that statement.
So we're voting on the appropriateness?
The, that's right. This is a, let's go back, I want to make sure we know what we're voting on for. A motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness, not the project, not how happy we are with it, not what we think, the certificate of appropriateness for the components of the Tarleton Oak Project, eight fifteen East High Street, that lie within the East High Street corridor, entrance corridor with the following modifications and the staff recommendations, but the modification will be that B A R reviewed the glass and got back to us. So, and that list of recommendations is here on page seven. And by the way, thank you all so much for your page numbers. I know I've asked that for a long time, but it's been super helpful. So that's our recommendation.
That's the motion.
That's the motion to approve the rec, uh, certificate of appropriateness and the recommendations.
Let's go.
Okay. Ms. Krizy, will you call roll?
Mr. Lahendra?
No.
Ms. Keller?
Aye, but I hope you'll continue to look at High Street.
Ms. Dow?
No.
Mr. Solids?
Aye, but I hope you'll continue to look at High Street.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
No.
So it's a tie.
It's a tie.
A tie.
So it fails.
So it fails?
Okay.
Or passes?
It fails.
Okay.
Okay, so so I I move approval with the condition that the glass be taken to the B A R and that the applicant reconsider the High Street facade.
So none of the other recommendations? Can y'all please turn to this while we're doing this?
And all of the other recommendations that are referenced in the staff report.
With, so the re, motion is for recommendations to certi, to approve the certificate of appropriateness, continuing with the B A R, checking, reviewing the glass, all the other staff recommendations, and?
And reconsider High Street to give it more of a primary street rather than a side street appearance.
Primary street instead of a side street appearance. Does, who does that go to?
Comes back to us.
You want it to come back to us?
I want it to come back to us.
If we approve this project, it does not come back to us, right?
Yeah, well, we're as, it's like when we ask people to come back with the details. We approve something, but we want them to bring back the signage or something.
I don't think it works that way. If we, if we approve this project, do we come back with just the High Street? Can we do that?
I mean, can't we just be more specific about what we want done?
They wouldn't have a C O A until everything was approved.
So we're going to, we're going to approve the C O A for everything except the High Street? Is that what I'm hearing?
And the, and the glass.
And the glass.
Yeah, I mean, most of the High Street is fine. There just needs to be some differentiation so it doesn't look like the side of a building on one of our major streets.
I agree with you. I'm just saying we need to give them something. We're either denying it, saying that High Street needs to be worked on, or with saying, hey, we like it all, but High Street.
But I think we've done this before, where we've asked people to bring back a detail for, you know, something.
I'm looking to you. Is that right? Can we do it?
So.
I mean, we.
The way the B A R works is they do a series of approvals, but you don't technically get your certificate of appropriateness till you get to the end of that process.
Okay.
You all have not historically used that process for the entrance quarter review, so I, and I would not recommend that you start doing that tonight. So I think you could do a couple of things. You can, you can defer it, you can approve it subject to conditions that you specify, or you can deny it.
Could that subject, the condition that we specify, the condition say to bring back the East Ty, the High Street, street wall on the, uh?
That's exactly what she's like, maybe we don't do it.
Oh, yeah, she said we don't do that, but I don't really know why we can't.
That's a significant thing that you all are supposed to review.
Why can't we, why can't we give them some idea of what we want? I mean, what do you, what exactly do you want on High Street to make you feel better?
Well, I don't know what I want and it's not about me making, making me feel better. I just think High Street is a is a primary street. We have courthouses facing on it, we, and this is, you know, this is, this facade really should be turned around and going down Eighth Street or something, but because they made it a corner building and and that's interesting and I think that's fine, it just needs something to give some rhythm to High Street.
So we did this last time, no, I'm sorry, but we did this last time with the project that we just approved, which came back a hundred times better. So what I'm saying to you all is, if you approve it, I don't, there's no, there was no coming back and you're not getting a chance to look at High Street. So it's either approved or defer, I mean, or we we've got to give something. And what you're looking for is something else on High Street and and I agree with you and and we've had times where we've had much better projects come back, not that this is not a good project, but this, this street wall is giving people heartburn. So we should make a decision, not be afraid to make a decision. Do you want, I mean, are you recommending deferral until we have this?
Well, that wasn't my intention, but if that's the only thing we can do, then I guess I would do that.
Well, it's not the only thing we can do because what we've got, I mean, I don't, there's, from what I understand, if we do approve this and you're just saying, please look at this, I'm not saying we're going to another look at this, is what I understand. And if what you want is another look at High Street, then we need to either deny or defer.
I'd say let's defer and see what they can come up with if there's some.
My recommendation would be to defer the project and see what the applicant can come up with because I feel like the project isn't horrible, but if we are going to look at this as the entrance quarter review, not just as the regular planning commission, then I personally cannot approve that unbroken up wall. We've, we've tackled that with any other project that has come before us, so.
So we start with things we like, I think pretty much all of it, with the exception of that street wall.
Right, and I think our applicant wants to defer too. Come on, let's rock and roll.
Okay.
Say it in the mic. We would be happy to defer and bring back some additional information on the High Street frontage.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do accept that deferral and we're happy to hear that.
And you don't have to do some big, major hokey thing.
I love y'all, but good night, I need to go get my kid.
We've been here long enough that the Dairy Central approval has made the daily progress website.
Perfect. All right, we still have.
Anybody in the parking garage?
I just want to say, so it's clear that B A R will not look at this until July.
Good luck.
And that's the week after your next meeting, so just so we're clear on the calendar.
Good night.
Oh crap, I can't get out after twelve?
I thought they stopped doing that.
Is it still open? Somebody just said it was closed.
First of all, I thought they stopped. With the new. Well, maybe we better take a recess, so people can check on their cars.
I'm not sleeping here tonight, so.
So we're going to recess for the next ten minutes, which is probably about three hours after we started this, the thing begin with. Ten minutes, go find your car.
I can't, I can't.
I can't, I can't.
All right, let's move it. Perp, no, no. Calls back in to session, last for the entrance corridor review board. Last item for the entrance corridor review board.
This one does not have any windows on it. In fact, this is one of those where probably the staff report's a little more detailed than necessary, but trying to be consistent here. Now, I am handing out something. I don't want to offer it as...
New information?
But it's, it's a clarification that I think is, is of, of great help in the discussion. It's, it's a solution that we had previously discussed, and, but I'll, I'll get into it, but there you have it. This is two two oh five Fontaine Avenue. This is a, a rather unextraordinary three-story brick building, built in nineteen eighty-eight on a roughly one-acre site, and within the building, UVA operates a compounding pharmacy, and they, where they produce chemotherapy drugs that are, are used by patients within this community. And they are subject to federal regulations, and those have changed, and they now have to alter their ventilation system to continue to operate the pharmacy. And I will say, I also got a lot of calls from people when they got the mail that they were thought a new pharmacy and a Walmart were coming over there, so I don't know if you got those calls. But all this is, is adding, with this new mechanical system, is adding ductwork to the east and west elevations of the building. It, and the applicant can certainly explain, running these through the building itself weren't feasible, necessitating sort of installing it on the exterior. And so, on the east elevation, and this is the side that's most visible, I won't read the details, but it's a series of three ducts, some fresh air intake, some exhaust, and the plan is to enclose those initially with a, some prefinished corrugated material like this. On the west elevation, it's only a single duct, again, the thought of concealing it within the metal. The cladding, as I said in the staff report, prefinished, channeled metal. The applicant has suggested a gray color, something like this, but they are also willing to, you know, accept and discuss maybe some other color schemes. The reason I handed this out is, we had, I talked to the applicant about just going with the plain ductwork, not trying to conceal it behind the panel, and, and, and the first thought was, well, then we're just dealing with regular ductwork, sort of with attached to the building. How are we gonna finish it, what's its durability? And we somewhat dismissed that. We got into discussion, the applicant the other day said, hey, well, look, maybe we can do this a different way. Again, I'll let them discard the materials, but that's what this alternative elevation is showing, what it would look like if you didn't have the metal paneling on it. Very quickly, as I say, the, the guidelines are rather silent on evaluating new ductwork on the side of an existing building. So, what staff did, we, we sort of worked backwards, and we said, you know, we're not changing the building, we're not changing the size, we're not changing its architecture, we're not changing the building's relationship to the street, or the streetscape. And so, we fell back then on, what we're dealing with is, in the guidelines, we have utility equipment and things, and the whole point is to minimize its visual impact. The guidelines do talk about colors, and so we have three options. One is, we can go with a paint scheme or some sort of panels that match the brick. Problem with that is, that usually ends up looking worse. We can go with a paint scheme that complements the brick, or we can go with a paint scheme that contrasts with the brick. And what I offered was that a contrasting color would prove more visible, but it would be, it would distinguish this from the original building, and that is one of the things in, in the guidelines. And a contrasting color doesn't need to even be muted. It could be something vibrant. It could be something bright. It, it, you know, there's an opportunity here if you want. Don't try to hide something that is clearly visible. So, but the first question I, I want you all to discuss is, is whether or not the installation of this ductwork on the side of the building is, you even feel appropriate within the entrance corridor. If it is, where do you fall relative to covering it or leaving it exposed? And finally, whether you have a preference on the color scheme. And so, my recommendation is that within all of that, I, I think it is appropriate. I think this is a commercial residential mixed area. I think the continued use of this building requires this, or at least for this use for, and so I suggest either an off-white or a gray, like they proposed, or something like a deeper gray or a darker color. And I invite you to just offer some guidance to the applicant, and I think they're here. I'll let them speak for themselves.
While they're coming up, I should say, I work for the University of Virginia, but this is a project that has not come through my office, and I know nothing about it, and feel like I can review it objectively without bias.
We're seriously looking at the outside panel over ductwork on the sides of the building, and nothing else?
Nothing else.
Wow, that's a big crew for panels over a ductwork.
My wife is an employee at the University of Virginia. I do not feel that that compromises my ability to judge this ductwork.
I work for the University of Virginia from time to time, and it's not a significant portion of my income, and I also do not feel that this affects my impartiality in any way.
I guess then so does my wife work for the University of Virginia?
Yep.
And, yeah, we don't talk about work, so...
Yeah, well, it did come up at council a few weeks ago, so it's probably better to just disclose.
Oh, okay.
I'm on the University of Virginia Health System Board, but I don't think this compromises my...
But we're all impartial, and we've all disclosed, and now we vote the way we...
But go whose.
And we all went to the university.
Yeah.
No, no, sorry. Please continue about the ductwork.
My name's Kevin Fox. I work for the University of Virginia Medical Center. I'm joined by my colleagues here, Kevin Silson, who's the project manager for this particular project, Maggie Short, who runs our continuum home health care, to which the ductwork is required, and Bob Knoll, who is our architect on the project. We're here tonight before you, and given the hour, I'm gonna be brief. This is not ductwork that we chose to put in. We are compelled to put in by changes in the federal requirements. The United Board of Pharmacopeia controls our pharmacies, and unlike building codes, which usually aren't retroactive, they're grandfathered, so if you build a building in two thousand, and it's built to the building code, then in two thousand and ten, when the building codes change, you're not required to upgrade your building. The Pharmacopeia Board, they don't operate that way. Licensed pharmacies in the state of Virginia and all states in the country are required to meet the most current standards. And the most current standards that are coming out now are U S P eight hundred, and our pharmacy that's currently located in the Colony Plaza Building in Continuum, it's not a new pharmacy, but it has new requirements, and to meet those, we have to put in new mechanical systems. And to put those mechanical systems in, we have to run ductwork up the side of the building. There really is no other way to get the fresh air into the new mechanical that we need without running these ductworks. We've worked with the architect and the planning staff to make these as unobtrusive as possible, but they are in addition to the outside of the building. Bob, you wanted to just talk about what we've done?
What we've done, we, they're on the ends part, and we've tried to move them back from the front as far as was feasible to get them there. We can do them unenclosed. We think they'll actually be less visible enclosed by the time we add brackets and other things to the supports for the ducts, so we can hide all those. And it, it is, we tried to give you realistic views in what we gave you. We don't try to sugarcoat it. But they, they're, they're far back in the building. The one you see really looking only when you look over, the Exxon station there, and the other one is largely invisible, except when you look down, the one on the west side, when you actually turn and look down the drive as if, which is actually an exit drive, not an entrance drive. But I'm open to questions if there are any.
What do you think is the expected life of, of this building?
Of the building?
Of this building, yeah. I mean, and does the university own it or lease it?
It's leased.
It's leased?
We don't own the building.
Okay, and may I ask, how long is your lease?
We're signing a new lease, but doing all these improvements, a ten-year lease, I think with two five-year options.
And what, do you have any idea what would be the expected life of this ductwork?
Well, the systems would have a twenty-plus year life, and they're fairly peculiar to the intended use, so I, they would serve for the anticipated duration of the pharmacy being in there.
And you would expect that use to continue for that ten-year period and possibly renewed? So, we're talking twenty years? So we're talking 20 years?
Yeah, Continuum Home Infusion has been there for 23 years already. We'd like to stay there for 23 more. It's a great location in terms of being able to quickly get to patients in there, because that's a lease service.
And again, this is, this was not, not our choice necessarily to have to upgrade the mechanical systems.
It's just a regulatory requirement.
Sure.
There are annual inspections, and we're expected to meet the most current USP guidelines.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
So what are the options we're going with? We have an option to go with plain, nothing, something or nothing? Is that what I'm?
So the ductwork can either be run as ductwork or enclosed within a surround made of this material.
Okay.
So there would be three separate ducts or three ducts enclosed within a surround.
But in the application, what we showed was enclosing them, and that's the rendering shown.
That's our.
Enclosed.
That's our recommendation.
How does, how is this handled in other places where these adaptations have to occur? Do you know? I mean, I would think that other facilities are smacked with the same regulation. What do they do?
Yeah, it's a significant issue. There, there's a great deal more than what you're seeing on the exterior that's going in the building, which is new air handling system to serve all of this, because essentially they're building a clean room within the building. So, and your question's a good one, because a lot of the health systems are struggling with this, because they've had kind of a bomb dropped on them, like, do this or stop having a compounding pharmacy.
So we built a compounding pharmacy up at the research park recently, and our hoods that, where the medications are prepared in a clean environment inside a hood. We were originally told six to eight week delivery time, because the USP 800 is coming into effect. So there's a nationwide shortage of these hoods for pharmacies, and we actually took six months for us to get the hoods actually delivered.
So if I can jump in with?
Yeah.
An opinion. No, actually, that, we should wait for discussion. This is the questions for the applicants right now.
Do we have any more questions, and we can go straight to discussion?
I, I notice, I do have a question for applicant. Mr. Knoll's, I noticed that on the proposed enclosure on the east side, is that, is that a cap on the top of it?
There is, there's, there's a weather cap on it. Be relatively low profile, we're trying to keep it as flat as possible, just enough to shed water.
And that doesn't create a problem with, of lack of ventilation in that enclosure?
Well, the enclosure is really just a wrapper on the ductwork. It's not actually, we, we could, if we're worried about relieving moisture or whatever, we can use a perforated soffit on the bottom of it.
I was wondering why you didn't use a perforated panel to enclose it.
The biggest reason is it would upgrade all the ductwork to now a weather tight standard, so we don't, at least we can know the ductwork will be dry and not have to worry about rusting and that sort of thing.
So the ductwork would have to change itself if you went to the exposed ductwork?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's not the same ductwork with both systems?
No.
Okay.
If you did, if you weren't subject to design review, what would you have done?
Just what we've shown you all.
With this metal cladding?
Partly, partly for the landlord's concern as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I, well, I'll wait till comment.
Are you, any more questions? We can have you guys sit, and we'll talk about it, maybe.
So I think there's, for my, from going by the building today and knowing it, there's, there's too much ductwork on the east side, and then the east side is too exposed to, I feel, not to try to disguise it with the screen. I personally would suggest going with a dark color to let it recede. You'll never match the red, so don't even try. And for the, the west side, just a single duct going up, if you could just paint that to match the, the dark color on the east side, the screen on the east side, just to do it as simple as possible.
Yeah, I agree with Jody. Just make it as utilitarian, and by going with a lighter color, you, you're making it look like the trim?
Yeah.
And it's a feature, and otherwise it's just a dark utilitarian.
Do you have a specific color off of this chart?
Nope.
Come on, just do that.
I'm not a control freak.
Yeah, there's a colonial red that you're supposed to.
Well, just to make it a change.
Is it 68% one that we can use here?
You know, I learned as a builder, never give this many options to a homeowner. Might I suggest something in the steel gray or in the charcoal gray? And honestly, I, I, I knew that if we simply approved this administratively, one day someone's going to ride by this building and say, my God, who allowed them to put that thing on the side of it? So this is, you know, unfortunately had to be brought to you. But may I suggest a steel gray, charcoal gray? I think the argument has been made for the use of this material, and.
We could go with rust, and then if it rusts.
It's, I believe this is a space age polymer that.
Is it not enough just to say a dark color and let the architect decide what to do? He's getting paid for it.
The 99, 99, 88. Can I respond?
Yes.
I, I, personally, we would never pick color in an environment like this, so we'd actually get out and see it by the building in the daylight.
Like the windows.
We'd be glad to run our selection by Jeff and make sure he works with us in the spirit of it, if that's acceptable.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, somebody make a motion?
Actually, I do have a question for Mr. Werner. I see there's a little bit of space on the site. Could some plantings be done to ease it a little bit?
Well, obviously always yes, but I think, you know, we're really looking at this element. It's not in my purview, I think, you know, to sort of start, I don't know how far we go with looking at the rest of it. So this is really just looking at this thing on the, on the side of the building. How, I guess, a tall tree, I, you know, I don't know. If you wish to go down that path, I, you are welcome to.
There's a sidewalk there.
So it's all paved.
Can you please come up and, yeah, come on up and.
I was just going to comment that on both sides of the building, that's our entrance and exit into our underground parking, and so it's paved. So there's no place to put a tree.
There goes my living wall idea.
Yeah, well, I think you can't do the living wall, right, because of the.
Sidewalk up there.
Because of the ductwork, right?
Just kidding, I was kidding.
Well, there's no, there's no soil ground to plant the living wall in.
Right.
Do we have a motion?
Well, there is the mural craze these days.
Madam Chair.
And I'm not a big fan of murals, but.
He's making a motion, or trying to.
I move to approve a certificate appropriateness for the proposed exterior ductwork at, ductwork at the east and west elevations of 2205 Fontaine Avenue, located within the Fontaine Avenue JPA entrance corridor, as presented with the following conditions, that the color of the metal cladding be a dark color to be determined by the architect and approved by staff, and that the ductwork on, the exposed duct on the west side be painted the same color as the selected color for the eastern closure.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Mr. Lohindro?
Aye.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yep.
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
Thank you for your patience. Motion passes.
All right, let me just make sure I, so the east elevation, we're going with the cladding, west elevation, the single exposed duct.
And we can review on the table.
Good, good, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Kevin.
Holy moly. I will now gavel us out of the entrance corridor and back into the planning commission so we can review the site plan for Sunrise Park PUD Phase Four. Don't worry, Mr. Schump, we're going to get there.
Don't worry.
It's all billable hours.
It's overtime, double time.
It's the next day.
This is like recreation.
Ms. Rainey, can you please get us through this?
Building Management Company is requesting approval of a final site plan amendment to construct a multifamily building with 22 residential units within the Sunrise Park PUD development. The property is identified within the Sunrise Park PUD plan as the northeast block. The other blocks and infrastructure improvements of the development have been completed through previous phases of construction. Per Proffer 13 of the Sunrise PUD development plan, the planning commission shall also consider the preliminary architecture plans in conjunction with the site plan to ensure the proposed building is harmonious in character with, with adjacent properties. The preliminary architecture plans include a building height diagram to show compliance with Proffer 3, which states the highest point of the building of the northeast block shall not exceed the highest point of the building within the northwest block. Photos of adjacent properties are also included in your report packet in Attachment 4 for compliance with the surrounding adjacent properties. Staff notes that the buildings surrounding this property are, encompass a variety of architectural styles, massing and details. There are several similarities with the existing building in the northwest block in regards to scale, modulation, window placement, and inclusion of items such as balconies. Staff recommends approval of the site plan and the preliminary architectural plans, and I'm happy to answer any questions and defer to the applicant if they have anything to add.
Would the applicant, do we have any questions? Would the applicant might like to make? No?
We're happy to answer questions.
Or we can go straight to discussion.
I have no questions.
So this, this will add 22 additional units?
That is correct. Per the approved PUD plan.
And it is in compliance with the approved PUD plan?
Yes.
John Santowski would be pleased, I mean.
There's a news flash for you, look at that.
Very close to the PUD, yes.
You think John's still up with us tonight?
John, are you there? Look at this.
John!
It's in compliance with approved PUD.
I was looking for it.
Yeah, I lost it.
We have so much information, it's hard to find.
Ms. Rainey, would you like to tell us which page that motion is on?
I do not have the packet printed in the entirety of those pages, so I have, it is page seven of the staff report.
There we go.
In the overall packet, I'm not sure.
You guys have rocked it with the page numbers, made me super happy.
Yeah, I've gone past it.
I think I whipped it into it.
I don't see that it's here.
I'm not finding it. There is no motion. There's a recommendation. Do we only make a recommendation?
No, you do approve, generally speaking, it's sort of a generic, I, you know, I move to approve this site plan amendment for the Sunrise Park PUD plan.
Based on staff recommendation?
Is there any staff recommendations?
Just approval of the site plan amendment and the preliminary architecture plan, which is under your purview per Proffer 13.
Can we use these dates right here?
Yes.
As if I were to say, I move to approve the final site plan dated May 23rd with the preliminary architectural plans dated May 30th, 2017, and the building height diagram dated October 4th, 2017, to include images of existing Sunrise Park Buildings PUD dated May 24th, 2018, as well as the Sunrise Park PUD development plan dated January 17th, 2018? Would that work?
Second.
That would be.
So we have a motion and a second. I typically don't make motions, but.
But it was called for, and you had the verbiage there.
Thanks for sticking around with us. We haven't even approved it yet.
Sorry, we couldn't add, sorry we couldn't add more drama to it.
Ms. Creasy, could you call roll?
Mr. Lohindro?
Aye.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye.
Good night.
Night.
Don't get too overconfident. And next on the agenda, what we've all waited for, since we have heard the special use permit, I think what we're looking for is to review the critical slope waiver. Am I correct?
If I may note, there were some modifications made to the special use permit request, not in regards to the nature of the request, but the design brought forward, which are noted in your staff report and which you, you may find worth discussing, which I'm happy to go over.
Fantastic. That's awesome. So that's all your, that's your whole presentation?
No, I'm ready. I just wanted to add that in as you were setting up the parameters of the discussion.
So it's my understa, okay, so we did review this special use permit in March. Would you like to quickly go over those changes for that special use permit? Can you do that?
Absolutely.
And then let's move into the critical slopes, because the critical slopes waiver is what we were looking for.
It is the only reason we need a special use permit, because they go from 20 feet setback to zero. Is that the only reason?
No, the requested multifamily use requires a special use permit, and in conjunction with that, the applicant has requested to go from 20 feet to zero.
Okay.
And a quick rundown of the requested changes, I'll just note that there's no changes regarding the site program of the mixed-use building with bakery café space on the first floor, and our multi-dwelling units on the upper stories, nor the grouping of condominiums. There's no major modifications to the parking lot design. The largest change would be in the pedestrian zone on both Monticello Road and Carlton Road. Monticello Road now shows a sidewalk with a width of more than eight feet, which includes some building overlap, which you can see in your street section graphics. On Carlton Road, there is now a five-foot sidewalk proposed, where previously there was a four-foot sidewalk. There's also a landscape buffer between the sidewalk continuing to be three to four feet in width. There's also been some clarification in the preliminary site plan to show a four-to-five foot, foot, front stoop in front of the condominium units, which is again shown in the graphics provided before you. And finally, there is additional short-term bicycle parking provided on Monticello Avenue in the preliminary site plan, in addition to the long-term spaces shown within the stairwell. I will note that the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator has noted that she would prefer the short-term bicycle parking to be visible from the bakery or café space entrance at the corner of Monticello Road and Carlton Road.
I understand we have some pretty significant environmental heavyweights in the room. Is that, is that accurate?
That is certainly true. They are in the room, just wanted to make sure before I said, we do have Mr. Hugh Blank with the engineering department, and Mr. Dan Frisbee with the environmental sustainability department here to discuss their critical slopes piece if we're ready to move on with that component of the project.
And that's fine, I just wanted to have a quick overview of this, the special use permit, and if you have any questions, because I think maybe.
No, I'm good, I've read it and.
Okay. Okay. Please proceed.
All right, per Section 34, 1120B1, the purpose and intent of the critical slopes provision, as a reminder, are intended to protect our topographical features that have slopes and excess grade established due to the potential disturbance causing negative impacts to those slopes. Improvements specific to areas where critical slopes would be impacted, should the waiver be approved, as shown on the critical slope exhibit, include portions of the mixed-use buildings and the condominium buildings, sidewalk adjacent to the mixed-use buildings, the parking lot, stormwater management facilities, the bus stop on Monticello Road, and a retaining wall of up to 18 feet in height in the southern portion of the site. Note, the majority of the site is wooded, critical slopes comprise approximately half of the site. The proposed critical slope disturbance accounts for 69% of that total critical slope area. slope area on-site, and thirty-five percent of the total site area. Twenty-one percent of the critical slopes are greater than sixty percent. Sixty percent of those are to be disturbed, accounting for sixteen percent of the critical slope disturbance. As noted, we do have several folks here who have provided analysis within your staff report and can answer specific questions regarding those items. Staff would also recommend Planning Commission focus on the following when discussing and making a recommendation to council: erosion affecting the structural integrity of the critical slopes, adjacent properties, and environmentally sensitive areas; stormwater impacts to adjacent properties or environmentally sensitive areas; the loss of tree canopy and wildlife habitat that can contribute to the natural beauty and visual quality of the community; your contrahemptive plan and the land use plan included therein, and potential conditions which may mitigate those impacts. I think we're all happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Is there a significant public safety risk here?
You mean currently?
I mean, if these slopes are regraded.
In terms of, like, water flow, running off-site, it may be more-
Not an engineer. If these changes are made, is it safe for, you know, the occupants and people, say, downstream, or using the road above?
I would say that the site plan would have to be developed to an engineering standard for which staff would review and ascertain that the practices were to a level of safety that was reasonable to assume.
Seems that the immediate public safety issues are not apparent, and there are ways to mitigate a lot of that, but there are a number of environmental issues, I think, that have been outlined in the plan that tactically are going to be very difficult to deal with, maybe strategically by using the nutrient credits, for example, to offset some of the impact on the Chesapeake Bay. That might present itself as a mitigating intervention, but tactically, locally, I'm not certain, maybe the developer can talk a little bit about how they're going to mitigate some of the issues, the runoff, the impact of Moore's Creek and the other impacts that, you know, disrupting this steep slope will have.
Questions now, and then we're gonna have the applicant do their presentation. Are you making a plan on making a presentation?
I thought I was supposed to ask, there was a question, but okay.
Okay, well, we're gonna ask questions of staff, and then we'll have the applicant do their presentation, and then we'll get to questions for the applicant.
So, all staff questions, now, not just Carrie, but-
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, staff questions. They've been sitting here patiently waiting.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I mean, the environmental engineer has laid out a lot of questions, so, I guess you're right, we'll wait till, we'll wait till the applicant-
Do you have questions for the engineers here, staffs?
He's laid them out and answered.
Okay.
Can you talk briefly about the significance of Moore's Creek and the specific intermittent stream in sort of our environmental strategy?
Defer to Mr. Frisbee, if you have something to add to that.
I would say Moore's Creek is one of our most significant waterways in the city, along with Meadow Creek and the Ravanna River. The small tributary stream to Moore's Creek, which is found immediately below the project site, is an intermittent stream, and it has significance in and of itself. Beyond that, I mean, the city definitely is pursuing efforts to restore and protect all of our streams, and I think we kind of consider them all to be important and significant, some more so than others, Moore's Creek being one of the more significant streams in the city.
What I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around, and I'm hoping you can help me, is how big of a problem is it citywide, if the disturbances contemplated here take place?
Well, I think in the picture of the entire city, this is a relatively small impact. The stream immediately below the project site would be the one that would be most immediately impacted, and I think it's up for debate how much, or how, to what extent that impact would be. Certainly, there is some grading and fill in the stream valley or ravine right above where the intermittent stream is. There will be some additional runoff created by converting the existing landscape from a forested landscape to a largely impervious landscape, to be mitigated by stormwater management. That is lessened somewhat when, instead of doing all that stormwater management on-site, credits are purchased to satisfy those stormwater management requirements, and that is contemplated in this scenario, so that's a consideration as well.
But that doesn't help us locally, those credits don't go to offset what happens to Moore's Creek, or that little stream that runs into Moore's Creek.
Typically, that's not what we're seeing at this point. Most of the credits that are bought do go outside of, certainly outside of the Moore's Creek watershed, outside of the Ravanna River watershed. We're getting to a place where there are going to be credits available locally within the Ravanna watershed, but at this moment, that's not the case.
What exactly do those credits, let's say they remain in Charleston, what do they do for Moore's Creek?
Well, depends, if the credits were generated in the Moore's Creek watershed, there would have been a project implemented. It could be a stream restoration project, it could be a stormwater management practice, and there's a certain amount of pollution reduced by those projects, which then a developer can use in lieu of satisfying their requirements directly on the site itself. So it really all has to do with where the project is implemented and where those credits are being purchased. These credits wouldn't be purchased in the Moore's Creek watershed, because they're not available, it's not possible for them to purchase credits that locally at this point in time. So, there is an increased impact to our local waterways when credits are purchased off-site, and it is outside of our local watersheds.
And there's no plans for retention, water gardens, or anything like that on-site with this project?
The plan does call for some underground detention and/or infiltration. Hugh might be able to speak to that a little more, the applicant may be able to speak a little more to what their plans on-site are, what they're proposing to do on-site would satisfy some, I think a little bit less than half of what the requirements are, and then the rest would be purchased with off-site credits.
Okay.
Hugh, I don't know if you want to speak anymore to what's proposed, or let the applicant speak to that?
I think I recall that the applicant's engineer claimed that the slopes were unstable. Can you speak to that, instability?
Yep, I think that's a fair assessment for some of the slopes on the site, particularly in the, I believe, the southeastern portion of the site, which are the slopes that are currently in the pathway of an existing stormwater outfall, or stormwater pipe that comes from under Monticello Road, and so the stormwater flows coming through that pipe have caused erosion, and continue to cause erosion, and those are completely within the sixty percent slopes that are on-site. Some of that area, I believe, is proposed to be filled and stabilized, as that existing pipe is being extended further into the site to carry those flows further down into that valley, so some of that existing slopes that are eroding would be filled in, the pipe would be extended underneath them, they would be stabilized on top, so in that regard, some of the existing unstable slopes would be addressed. From what I know of the site, though, I'd say a majority of the existing critical slopes are not in an unstable state, rather, they seem fairly stable to me.
And by extending this pipe and sending the water down into the valley, would that be likely to cause any additional problems that don't occur now?
I don't believe-
Visiting them on another neighbor, or?
I don't believe it would cause any additional problems. That is merely going to be extending the existing pipe and just depositing those flows further down into the valley, without seeing exactly where that is and what the exact conditions are, where the proposal is to outfall that pipe, it's hard to say. And there are some requirements that they have to discharge to a stable receiving system, so there are some requirements there that should help alleviate that. The additional water that would be generated by the site is also being funneled to that same point, so there's a potential that that additional water could cause or exacerbate the existing erosion that's there, but just by merely extending the pipe, I don't see that that would be causing any more of an impact than already exists.
I'd say that there is additional flows that are going to the, for the point he was talking about, but those will be reduced flows, so the flow rate should be the same. So a properly engineered, approved plan should be, have a stable outflow and the same flows. So even though more water will be generated because of the more impervious area, the detention system will hold that back, release it more slowly, so you won't have this, you shouldn't have any more additional flow creating any more problems. They will be moving the areas where the flows come out of the pipe, but there shouldn't be any more, no more higher magnitude than previously.
And are we losing any significant trees, or, I see some sycamores on here, and I'm not entirely clear what trees are being removed.
It may be easiest to reference the preliminary site plan included with the special use permit application for which trees specifically are being removed, which is on, I believe it's our existing conditions and demolition page, which- C-two, thank you, C-two, there is, trees are specifically noted to be removed or to be preserved in a sort of typical fashion through that sheet, and I can hoist this up there if that's needed.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you. But I wondered if staff had any opinion about those?
I see one big canopy tree to be removed, I'm not sure what kind.
Yeah, I wasn't clear when I said trees to be removed. I wasn't clear, is it this whole clump, or because of the way the arrow was going?
The dark, the dark.
The dark, all these trees are removed.
All of these trees are removed.
This one right here is saved, look at that light one, that one right there, that little tiny one right there.
Typical implies all.
And that one right there, that one's saved. So we're four, I've counted four. Am I good with that number, four trees saved? Yeah, five, four, four, these four, one, two, three, four.
And I believe there are a couple other entire areas that are being, where the vegetation is being preserved as well. Those trees aren't individually shown, but I believe there are other areas where that, where there are, where there are intact areas being preserved, but the applicant can clarify that.
Okay, so you're not clearing the entire site for this? Okay. Mr. Tree, can I have you? This is one, two, three, four, so where's this other parcel where nothing's being cleared?
It's gotta be if they're building-
Those were the only questions I had, thank you.
Okay. Y'all ready for the applicant?
Do you need this back, Carrie?
We're probably gonna need that.
Leave it up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm starting with it. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Hello again, Chris Henry with Stony Point Design Build, and I'm here with Justin Shump, Shump Engineering, and Josh Batman from Stony Point Design Build, and this is Peter with Shump Engineering. Our presentation is actually geared towards the SUP, but if we're staying on the topic of the steep slopes, I think that this, a lot of the material we have in this presentation would be irrelevant to the discussion unless you want to see it again. And this is, it's the same presentation basically that we gave in the last meeting with Planning Commission, so.
It gets up to the new folks. Did you see it before?
I didn't, but I reviewed it.
It's to you guys, you want to see it?
Yeah, I'm agreeing.
In the interest of time.
I can clarify, if I recall, it was deferred last time, so there's still, is probably a vote required?
Oh, yeah.
We deferred so that we would be able to-
More information on the critical slopes.
So there's, I think there's three things that are important to consider with the steep slopes. One primary consideration, I think, is that the site was previously graded, which created at least half of these steep slopes from our topo survey of the site, and so it was clear-cut and graded, we think somewhere thirty years ago or so, and we don't know what the use was planned there. There was an electrical connection, and we don't have any record of what building stood on that site, but there was previous development there, and so that kind of created some of the condition that we're dealing with. And the second thing is that there's, I think the site as it exists today actually has some public safety concerns to it, along Monticello Avenue, you have a pretty steep drop-off where a storm culvert comes across from the housing development that was uphill from there. There's kind of a railing there now, and we'll be making some pretty extensive public improvements to that sidewalk, putting in a new bus stop, making it ADA accessible, undergrounding utilities along that front end of the building to mitigate that condition. And third is some of the environmental conditions, you know, to fit the equivalent number of units, and like a buy-right single-family scenario would take three-plus acres of land, and so we're adding density in appropriate places in the city that are walkable and bikeable to jobs and to retail, we think is overall a more sustainable way to develop. Some of the site, we are replanting with additional trees along some of the steep slope that's being disturbed, we're controlling the stormwater outflows, and we're adding street trees along Carlton Road that don't currently exist, and a lot of these things are done in conjunction with the neighborhood through the extensive public community engagement process that we have, that you heard about earlier with Dairy Central, we brought the same thing to bear with this project, and I think the Belmont Community Neighborhood Association sent you guys a letter of support yesterday expressing that sentiment for this project, so those are the considerations, I think, that are important for the steep slope waiver. Justin, can you answer any technical detail questions?
I'll say if any questions, not that I like to talk sediment transport at one in the morning, but we can, if needed, some. I think the city staff pretty well addressed, you know, how we can mitigate these things, but we're happy to go into more detail if you'd like to.
So the trees to be removed, typical, is that every tree on the site going to be removed?
No, there are a number of trees down the, I don't know what quadrant it is, there's that-
Do you need this?
Well, it'll be-
It's this quadrant right down here.
Yes, that's right. This is-
It says right here, a little bubble, this little bubble right here, it says save.
So this trees to be removed-
And this tiny little bit right here, it says save.
Goes to this clump?
When this arrow goes into that, it means this whole clump, right?
That clump, there's one tree there and a couple small ones, yes.
Yeah, four trees.
Five.
Five trees and a clump.
They're being removed, and everything towards the streets, and everything that's down the ravine is left existing.
But you surely can't be leaving these trees.
No, those are taken out.
No, they're gone.
Those are also in the bowl, there's some gray trees, we didn't locate all the trees down in the-
What kind of trees?
Oh, the gray shading on the plant.
Oh, gray, okay.
So if you look at the, those would be left, and those are ones that we actually surveyed, there's some additional trees down in the swale that we just didn't survey, they're out of our limits of work, but we surveyed all the ones removed in the area of the site.
So these all are being removed?
Because that's your project site.
Yeah, yes.
I've been looking to me your plans, I understand-
That's your construction site.
There's been some concern about the quality of the trees that are existing on the site, our neighborhood- Our neighbor to the south, George D'Alamonte, is actually asking us to try and remove trees from his backyard too, that he thinks are dying and are gonna fall on his house.
A timely concern.
And we think the trees that we're, we will be planting onsite will be of healthy quality and free of any ivy and over, you know, invasive species and those kind of things.
The trees we are removing from the neighbor's yard, and you can see that they're maples.
You are removing them from his yard.
It's pretty scruffy stuff.
He has requested that we do that, yes.
Can they do that over a certain, I mean, do they not have to get a permit for that or something?
No, single family home, medium shade trees.
Many of the maples are silver maples, and they're kind of falling apart at this stage in their life, and that's one reason why the neighbors requested that. So most of the trees across the site are kind of, it's overgrowth, it's something, it was a site that looks like it was previously disturbed and kind of grew up from that. So it's not like there's specimen trees that we're removing from this lot, and we will be providing some quality medium shade trees along the Carlton streetscape as well.
So this 30-inch maple right here, you're saying that's a silver inch, a silver maple?
Silver maple, yeah.
As much as I try. So this big clump right here, it says five 24-inch trees, they're just trees, no specific kind, just like trees?
That's another maple clump of sorts.
Oh, so it's silver maples, everything's a silver maple.
I can't personally say every tree is a silver maple, but there are silver maples across this, yes.
But they're all bad. They're all falling apart.
I wouldn't say they're all falling apart, I said there are some large silver maples on the site that need to be, that need to be removed anyway.
So refresh my memory, please, on which basis are you requesting the slope waiver? The public benefit or the unusual physical conditions?
I think we probably talked about both in these. And I think the public benefit, Chris, you know, touched on, and I think the staff report talked about it too, that there's a balance, these are the infill developments, the properties are not necessarily going to be, you know, the simplest properties to build on. So I think there's that element of it. And it is, you know, it's a, by virtue of being infill, it does have some unusual characteristics, the previous grading work that was done. There's the pipe, the pipe that drains out, part of the erosion issues that are there is the pipe that drains out underneath Monticello, just sort of extends up in the air and water falls down and erodes a ditch, and that's contributed to the slopes, I suppose, over time. But we'll be correcting all of that, this work. In fact, we then, we grade over that area, we stabilize the channel downstream from that, and then we revegetate the area graded with trees, planting to basically reforest that with a healthier forest mix. So I think there's probably some of both on the site, but we think that the, and the public need is, or the infill component of this and creating this sort of project, I think, checks a lot of the boxes.
And I will say, we met with Morgan Butler of the Southern Environmental Law Center about this project. He happened to be at our SUP hearing back in March, and mentioned that he had some concerns about the steep slope and the plantings. And so we went and we met with him, and we worked, we actually revised the site plan to add additional trees at where the, where the culvert is coming out. And some of those corrections are actually revisions to the site plan as a result of the meeting with Morgan, I think, you know, that they didn't feel the need to come tonight and express additional opposition to the project, so that, to me, is encouraging.
And do those added trees increase the screening from the residential neighborhoods downhill from you all?
The trees, I would say, are adjacent, they're sort of between us and the apartments. We're not really touching the trees that are to the neighbors down the hill from us. Those are staying, what's there today will stay.
So this is between the apartment complex on?
Yes, directly along, if you're walking the sidewalk on Monticello, you have now this ravine, the drop-off, you'll have a more gently sloped, newly planted forest, basically. The bus stop will be there, and the replanting of trees and shrubs and undergrowth trees behind that.
And as well, a significant amount of landscape buffer on the Carlton Road south side of the project, where our other single-family neighbor is. And he's written a letter of support for this project as well, that should be in the records.
So this is awful close to the other Belmont project, do you anticipate any blasting here?
Yeah.
No, we've done.
I don't know if I'd laugh.
Hopefully not.
We've done geotechnical, there's fill that wasn't necessarily all, you know, well-placed part of why there's erosion, I don't know places because of that. But yeah, no, there's no, there's no rock. And we're actually mostly, we're mostly fill on the site, so, yeah, we're gonna avoid any blasting here.
Is that the difference in heights, is that the result of Monticello being built, and they put in fill for Monticello, and then it sloped down from there? They didn't graduate the slope from Monticello down?
I suspect so, it's hard to know exactly, it was an old road, but, you know, the slope on the, our side is very steep. So I think in those days, they didn't have a standard like we do now, you know, two-to-one slope, it was just put whatever dirt felt like it was reasonable. My wife calling me wondering where I am? And that's just how it was left. You wouldn't do that today, what we're doing is bringing it to a current standard, and that involves retaining walls and regrading expense, but what's built will be much more stable than what is there.
Yeah, I wish you'd included some illustrations of the retaining walls. They seem to be fairly extensive. Can you describe what, since there aren't any illustrations, or I didn't, I can't call any?
For elevation, basically?
Yeah, for, for those retaining walls. I remember something like 260 feet long and 18 feet tall.
Sorry. Do you want me to take that? Well, you know, we have, we don't.
You can just text her, you're fine.
We don't normally have, you know, submit elevations with a, with a site plant this for walls that aren't in an entrance corridor or something like that. So I guess we, we would probably build them out of a stacking block wall. I don't think we've picked out a color or anything like that at this point, but we try to use earth toned things that, you know, through the trees sort of blend in as best we can.
And it's not in an area of the site that's gonna be visible from either of the, either Carlton Road or Monticello Road, and we don't think from the, from the bottom of, I don't know what road that is, that goes down below the project, but it's.
Will they be in the parking lot?
It's pretty far away, and there's, there's a lot of trees in between, so it's, we don't think it's visible from really anywhere.
Then those are my final questions.
What is this particular, I mean, so this is a wall six feet to 18 feet, what is this part of? Is that a wall too?
That's a little wall as well, yes.
What's the reason for that?
That's where the slope is too steep, that you can't put it back to grade, basically. It's beyond what's permissible today, and so that's the area we have to widen the sidewalk out, the bus stop is there, and so we can't leave that cliff behind the street, so we grade that out, extend the pipe, fix the outfall, add riprap, et cetera, et cetera, and then we revegetate that slope above the wall.
A lot of that is generated from the extension that we're making for the bus stop, which has been a request of the city traffic engineer, I believe. We're sort of neutral on the bus stop.
I'm sorry, all of this is because of that two, little two-foot thing right there?
I mean, really, the widen the sidewalk has to be placed all across, and our utilities underground the sidewalk area. So we're, it's not shown on that sketch, I say, but we're working in that area that generates the grading. I guess to widen the sidewalk, it's, I mean, it's a cliff right off that sidewalk right now, the rail right there.
So the.
No, no more questions for me.
The reason you're having to disperse the critical slope is because of the scope and scale of the project. Have you guys, and I think in the staff report they mentioned it, it's possible to have done that, have you guys given a lot of, any thought to maybe tightening things up a little bit so you don't have to disperse these steep slopes?
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've tightened this building up as a result of numerous reviews that we've been through, and I think there's really not any fat left to squeeze out of it. If, you know, some other things that we could build on this site, you know, as a matter of right, would be like a gas station or self-storage or a drive-through.
Drive-through restaurant.
And, or seven single-family.
We have a smaller footprint, by the way.
Or, or like seven single-family homes, which would be much larger in square footage per unit, but the eight apartments on top of the retail, for example, are six to 700 feet each. So when you add those up, you know, the total square footage is about the same as some of the other uses that we could have considered on the site.
To the applicants, credit to, in the last review, we asked for more space between the street and the building, and so, and they have provided what they can without then getting into trouble on the backside. It's a very difficult site, and they're, and small footprint, well, difficult site.
Yes.
So we have two, we, well, we need to make some discussions. Any more questions for you guys? We'll let you sit down.
Thank you.
Text your wife, everything's okay. Well, maybe.
Could be determined.
And we have two decisions to make, and probably we have, need to address the critical slope waiver first, which is a recommendation, not a, not a, not a motion.
Both are recommendations.
Both are recommendations, okay. Sorry, my bad, it's late.
Because that's changed since Hosea was here last. We can no longer grant waivers, we have to recommend approval.
That's right.
I don't know, were you here when we had critical slope? Yeah, the whole thing's new.
Yeah, thanks to Virginia Supreme Court.
Any discussion or recommendation? Motion for recommendation, is that what we, I don't know.
I have, just looking over the staff recommendations, I see an idea about habitat redevelopment, how important is that for Belmont?
Are they recommended approval?
Are you asking staff, do we still have questions now? Are you asking staff to comment on wildlife or habitat in Belmont?
I guess I am, yeah. Sorry.
No, no.
It would not surprise me that that's important to people in Belmont, but, you know, I live there, so. Can you comment on these conditions?
I'm not sure we could speak specifically to the citizens of Belmont and what they may or may not find important. We as staff felt that the loss of the existing area, which is, has somewhat of an overgrown tendency, that can be an ideal habitat for certain, you know, species of various fauna, would be beneficial to have some additional multi-story sort of vegetation included. So, you know, we're not looking at just trees, but perhaps we're looking at some other shrubby and/or herbaceous growth that could replicate what may be found onsite today. But I want to be comfortable saying that the citizens of the Belmont neighborhood are specifically in tune to that piece necessarily, if that gets, if that answers your question.
I'd like to add something to that, I was trying to make. You talked about the magnitude of things. In an urban environment, everything is small. If I ignored everything, it was small, nothing would get done. So everything that, we lose things incrementally, and we try to bring back things incrementally. So I think in the urban context, saying how much is this, you gotta kind of take it out of principle. That we're really trying incrementally improve things, and it's a slow process, but something we try to keep. We try not to lose any more than we have to, so try to keep that in mind when you think about perspective. I can't get into the minds of Belmont residents, but just from an engineering standpoint, that's kind of how we try to do things.
Given that I saw a deer on Head Street between First and Second Streets the other day, I'd say the strength of our wildlife is pretty good.
Saw a small deer right on the little tiny piece of grass that was left from the flooding in Willow Mills the other day, just waiting on the floodwater, so I don't know, standing right there.
Well, I'm usually the defender of the critical slopes ordinance, but I can see value in this and lots of issues with this site, and that it probably is more adaptable to an urbanizing condition than to try to retain it as, in its current state. So I would be in favor of the waiver. What I'm not sure is if there are any conditions that others would want to add.
So the suggested motions are on 12.
Right.
And then there was this whole thing of conditions.
Yeah.
That we would want to.
Is that for the critical slopes or the SUP?
Yeah, that's for the critical slopes.
And I would be, I mean, I think they're very well worded and thought out.
Yeah, staff has a number of conditions here, I think, or maybe these are conditions they can have. Oh, I see, yeah.
Conditions.
I was skipping ahead, that's what I was talking about.
So I would, I move to recommend approval of the critical slope waiver for tax map 57 parcels, 123.69, 123.701, 123.71, a tax map. 61 parcel 2.2 is requested with no reservations or conditions based on a, wait a second, no, with the, with the following, with the conditions that are referenced in the staff report on page 11.
Second.
Do we have to reference at least one of these?
Oh, reference at least one.
Based on the finding that?
That the public benefits of allowing the disturbance outweigh the benefits afforded by the existing undisturbed critical slope per section 34-1120B6DI, and due to unusual physical conditions, compliance with the city's critical slopes regulations would unreasonably restrict the use or development of the property per section 34-1120B6D, two little i's.
Hike, second that too.
Second that too, okay. We have a motion for approval with the conditions outlined on page 11, is that enough for you all? And due to both conditions, both findings. Do we have any more comp, discussion?
And that may be the only time in my long career that I've ever made a motion for a critical slope waiver, but I don't want to leave any stones unturned here.
There you go.
Before I leave.
Ms. Kruse, will you please call roll?
Mr. LaHondra?
Aye.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Soliets?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Me.
And Ms. Green.
So the next thing we must vote on or discuss first is the special use permit. I think Ms. Rainey gave us a good outline of the changes. I'm sorry, that recommendation passed four to one. Okay, on to the special use permit. And there are a long list of conditions for that one. So.
To be expected.
I would say that the sidewalk width, the widening, is a definite improvement.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion to recommend approval of this application for a special use permit in the M1MI zone, is it M1 or MI?
Aye.
Thank you. Zone at zero Carlton Road, tax map 57, parcels 123.69, 123.701, 123.71, and tax map 61 parcel 2.2, to permit multifamily residential development up to 21 dwelling units per acre with the conditions listed. conditions listed in the staff report.
Would this be the conditions that are in bold or all conditions?
All conditions.
All two pages.
All two pages.
The recommended conditions that are just above the.
Just want to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, recommended approval with all conditions on pages four and five. We have any further discussion? Ms. Christie, would you call roll?
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Ms. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Solayez?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
And Ms. Green.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you all for your patience. Thank you.
And thus ends the programming for this evening. We would ask that you join us again in July on the second Tuesday. Do I get a motion for that?
Some move.
For the record, this is ours.
Right.
You got a collection of them.
Yeah. We know.
We'll bring it to you next time.